Good evening, everyone. We would like to call the business session school board meeting for Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty five and to order Madam Clerk.
Mr. Percival.
Here.
Ms. Ricard.
Here.
Mr. Farouk.
Here.
Mr. Hedgesmith.
Here.
Ms. Rizzi.
Here.
Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Jafari.
Here.
Ms. Fernandez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for Dr. Harris Mohammed to join via Zoom as she is currently out of town.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Percival and seconded by Ms. Burke, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Percival.
Yes.
Ms. Ricard.
Yes.
Mr. Farouk.
Yes.
Mr. Hedgesmith.
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Jafari.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the pleasure allegiance and moment of silence led by Ms. Burke.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll ask for translation services announcement. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the language justice team, we welcome you. If you need interpretation from English to Spanish, please come see me in the entrance where I'll be with the interpreters. We have interpretation headsets for anyone that needs one. Interpretation in Spanish is also available for those watching this meeting through Zoom. I want to remind everyone to please speak at a normal pace and keep your face no more than a couple of inches from the microphones so that our interpreters can hear you clearly. Thank you, and I will now make the same announcement in Spanish. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos. Si usted necesita interpretación del inglés al español, por favor diríjase a la entrada donde estaré yo con los interpretes. Yo les puedo dar audífonos para que puedan escuchar la reunión de la junta escolar en español. La interpretación también está disponible para los que están viendo la reunión a través de Zoom. Gracias, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to one point zero four, approve the minutes of September second and September third school board meetings.
Madam Chair. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the school board meeting on September second and September third, two thousand twenty five.
It's been moved by Mr. Hedgesmith and seconded by Mr. Jafari, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Percival.
Yes.
Ms. Ricard.
Yes.
Mr. Farouk.
Yes.
Mr. Hedgesmith.
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi. Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Jafari.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. Now we have the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Ricard.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the agenda.
It's been moved by Ms. Ricard and seconded by Ms. Burke, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Percival.
Yes.
Ms. Ricard.
Yes.
Mr. Farouk.
Yes.
Mr. Hedgesmith.
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi. Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Jafari.
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now for one of the most exciting parts of our school board meetings, our recognition. Starting off with our student representative, allow Mr. Cameron to introduce our students.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening. I am delighted to introduce Javanya Harvey from Huguenot High School. Javanya is a sophomore at Huguenot where she excels both inside and outside the classroom. As the current Student Council President and an active member of the Huguenot High School Academy, Javanya demonstrates strong leadership and commitment. She's also a proud athlete on the Huguenot Girls Flag Football Team and often captivates audiences as an emcee for school events like the Black History Month program. Beyond school, Javanya combines her passion for clothing design with her dedication to community service. Through the Student Council Association, she has supported the Kicks Crew fundraiser, which donates a portion of its proceeds to SHUDE, a nonprofit providing new or gently used running shoes to economically disadvantaged communities. An honor roll student, Javanya plans to attend a four-year university where she hopes to play basketball while pursuing a career in the medical field. She is driven by a desire to save lives and serve as a positive role model in her community. Javanya doesn't just participate, she leads, inspires, and uplifts those around her. With her strong academics, passion for service, and talent in sports and public speaking, she is already making an impact. Her dedication, creativity, and vision make it clear Javanya Harvey is on a powerful path and she's only just beginning. Please join me in welcoming Javanya Harvey.
Good evening, Chairperson Shavonda Fernandez, members of the school board, superintendent cameras, teachers, families, and fellow students. To begin, I would like to thank the board and superintendent cameras for giving me this opportunity to share both my voice and the voices of my fellow peers. I am grateful for the opportunity to sit among you and gain a deeper understanding for your mission and plan for the future. First, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Javanya Harvey and I'm a tenth grader at Huguenot High School. This evening, I will be speaking about myself, my involvement in my school, and addressing challenges at Huguenot. At Huguenot, I serve as the Student Council President. As president, I aim to bring ideas that my peers and I believe should happen around the school. In addition, I am a scholar athlete and serve as tight end and quarterback on our flag football team in my school. I hope to use today's opportunity to share feedback on the challenges impacting not only Huguenot but also RPS. One of the challenges is the lack of diversity and food chain choices in Richmond Public Schools. Some students at Huguenot High choose not to eat the school breakfast or lunch and will go the whole day without eating anything. Many students lack food at home and school lunch is all they can eat a day, so it is better to provide better lunches for the students. Students should have better options of food that provide nutrients that can be better for their brain power and help them learn. One solution for this challenge is that RPS should consider putting vending machines in the school cafeterias. Many students do not eat at school because they feel that the school food is not edible or has a good taste. Also, the vending machines can be useful for staff also. The vending machines can provide healthier snacks such as Nutri Grain Bars, baked chips, water, Gatorade, et cetera. This will give students another option if they feel they do not want to eat the school lunch. The vending machines could be accessible throughout the day. However, during lunch, the vending machines will be unplugged so that the vending machines will not interfere with school lunch. Another challenge is the need for more security staff members to ensure safety and security. Although clear book bags are not a bad idea, the daily morning checkpoint process is very time consuming. Security checking the clear book bags take up a lot of time in the morning and many students arrive to class late because they're waiting on security to check their book bags. More security will help hold better safety throughout the school. In addition, more security can help prevent altercations and any sort of trespass. One solution is to hire additional security to help with the morning checkpoint and more protection in the school. More security will help improve the overall flow of checking bags in the morning. Thus, more students will arrive to class on time. Increasing more security can help by making sure the students are safe at all times. These two challenges, the need for increased lunch variety and clear book bag checkpoints and protection are important to myself and my fellow peers. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I hope my ideas and suggestions will be considered and possibly implemented. I appreciate your time and attention and I wish you all a good evening.
Thank you so much for being here this evening and for sharing your thoughts with us. We've all covered some notes, so thank you so much for that. Moving right along to receive proclamation and recognition of national, I'm sorry, recognition of school bus transportation employees and Bus Safety Week. Mr. Cameron.
Good evening, everyone. Since we have many proclamations and many attendees tonight, we have folks coming in one proclamation at a time to be recognized. We have our videos. What we're going to do is show the video, then press pause. We'll have the board come down and take a picture. And then I'm going to actually have the board stay down, watch the video on the screen. We'll do the next picture and then the folks can go out. We'll do the next picture and so on so that we don't have to come back and forth. Sound good? All right, and welcome, folks. I'm going to ask if you can part just slightly so folks in the audience can see the screen. We want them to hear the great proclamation in your honor. And if there's anybody in the audience for school bus transportation employees and Bus Safety Week, come on up. All right.
Pardon me, I think we might be playing the wrong video. Oh, I see. Got it.
...to grow up in a safe, supportive, inclusive environment where they can learn.
Albert Hill.
Bullying prevention month is October twenty twenty five. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a safe, supportive, inclusive environment where they can learn, thrive, and reach their full potential without fear of bullying or harassment. And whereas bullying, whether in person, online, or through other forms of aggression, is an intentional and harmful behavior that undermines a student's sense of safety, dignity, and belonging with lasting academic, social, and emotional consequences. And whereas educators, parents, caregivers, students, and community leaders play a vital role in bullying prevention by fostering a culture of inclusion, teaching empathy, encouraging open dialogue, and providing students with the tools and support they need to stand up to bullying and report it safely. And whereas RPS affirms the values of belonging to be seen, heard, loved, and supported within every school's four walls. And whereas RPS encourages schools to participate in activities throughout the month to recognize the importance of adopting an anti-bullying mindset, teaching students to be upstanders rather than低下 standards, and creating opportunities to demonstrate kindness all while incorporating these practices into the culture of our school to ensure lasting change. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Richmond Public Schools recognizes October twenty twenty five as Bullying Prevention Month and encourages all schools and community members to join in this recognition.
Hi, I'm Tyler Barnett, a sixth grader from Albert Hill. We celebrate National School Lunch Week from October thirteenth to seventeenth in twenty twenty five. Whereas for more than seventy-five years, the National School Lunch Program has been a cornerstone of student health and academic achievement, providing balanced nutritious meals that fuel children's bodies and minds, helping them stay focused, engaged, and ready to learn each school day. And whereas RPS participates in the community eligibility program that ensuring that every student regardless of household income receives a nutritious breakfast and lunch at no cost. And whereas RPS schools roughly serve roughly twenty-three thousand five hundred meals a day, from breakfast to lunch to the National School Lunch Program, totaling more than three point nine million lunches during the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five school year. And whereas school lunches nutrition professionals work tirelessly to prepare and serve these meals with love, ensuring that students have access to fresh fruits, vegetables, whole grains, lean proteins, and low-fat dairy while adhering to food safety protocols and addressing dietary needs of diverse student populations. And whereas RPS is proud to highlight student voice and leadership in shaping school meals as demonstrated through the student taste test takeover in this season, which allows students to sample and to be provide feedback on new menu items to improve school lunches. And whereas partnerships with local farmers, community organizations, and initiatives such as Farm to School, Farm to School, Tristen, our community to nourishing students with fresh, sustainable, and culturally relevant meals. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Richmond Public Schools recognizes October fifteenth to seventeenth, twenty twenty five as National School Lunch Week and encourages all schools and community members to join in this celebration.
My name is Ateya Pride and I'm an eighth grader at Albert Hill. And this is Custodial Workers' Recognition Day. Whereas RPS recognizes the vital role custodial workers play in maintaining a safe, clean, and welcoming learning communities for our students and families. And whereas the RPS custodial team works diligently behind the scenes, often in the early morning and late at night. And though challenging circumstances assuring that the classrooms, hallways, cafeterias, restrooms, and playgrounds are kept spotless and ready for our students and educators. And whereas RPS custodial staff play a vital role in contributing to student success by fostering a healthy face facing that are conducive to learning and success. The custodial staff serve with love by developing meaningful relationships with students, offering encouragement, support, and a friendly presence that helps foster a sense of belonging in the school. And whereas the dedication, professionalism, and pride demonstrated by RPS custodial staff reminds us that every role within our school is essential to creating a thriving, affordable, and supportive learning environment. And now therefore, it be proclaimed that Richmond Public Schools recognizes October second, twenty twenty five as National Custodial Workers' Association and encourages all schools and community members to join us in this celebration.
I'm Ariel Green.
And I'm Charlotte Abner. We're seventh graders at Albert Hill Middle School.
October 2025 is Head Start Awareness Month.
Whereas since its inception in 1965, the Head Start Program has been a cornerstone of early childhood education in the United States, providing comprehensive support to children and families to ensure that every child enters school ready to succeed. And.
Whereas Head Start and early Head Start programs take comprehensive approach to starting young children and their families through four essential pillars: high-quality education that supports intellectual, social, and emotional growth; health services that promote healthy development through screening nutrition and mental care; family involvement that empowers parents as partners in learning and wraps around support; the help that connects families with individualized community resources.
Whereas RPS Head Start Programs proudly teach and serve with love hundreds of children and families each year, empowering parents as their child's first and most important teacher while creating meaningful pathways for family stability and growth. And.
Whereas Head Start has been proven to narrow achievement gaps, foster social, emotional development, and equip children with tools they need to thrive in school and beyond. And.
Whereas Head Start Awareness Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the dedication of our teachers, staff, families, and community partners to make this work possible and to reaffirm our commitment to equitable access to early childhood education for every child in Richmond.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Richmond Public Schools recognizes October 2025 as Head Start Awareness Month and encourages all schools and community members to join in this recognition.
I'm Joshua Herter. And I'm a sixth grader. And today I will be reading National Farm to School Month and Virginia Farm to School Week. Whereas Farm to School Month is celebrated nationally each October to recognize and provide critical opportunities for students to understand where their food comes from, appreciate the work of farmers, and build connections between classroom, learning, and real world, sustainability, and. Whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia has long produced a bounty of delicious and nutritious farm commodities, including corn, peanuts, soybeans, apples, pumpkins, tomatoes, sweet potato, lettuce, green cucumbers, and peppers. And. Whereas by integrating Virginia-grown products into school meals, students not only enjoy nutritious foods, but they also learn about food seasonality, the environmental benefits of supporting local farmers, and the importance of reducing transportation and protecting farmland. And. Whereas RPS is committed to fostering lifelong, healthy eating habits by engaging students in hands-on learning experiences such as school gardens, taste tests, and farm visits, and collaboration with valued partners including Greater Richmond Fit for Kids, Lululemon, Local Foods, and many others who help bring Farm to School to life. And. Whereas on Thursday, October 9, 2025, RPS students will join in the church, in the crunch herd round the Commonwealth, a fun and engaging event that raises awareness about the Virginia Farm to School Program and highlights the diverse varieties of apples grown in Virginia while supporting local apple growers and celebrating the season's freshest product. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Richmond Public Schools recognizes October as National Farm to School Month and joins the Commonwealth of Virginia in recognizing the week of October 6th through 10th, 2025 as Virginia Farm to School Week and encourages all students to enjoy a crunchy apple to celebrate.
Good evening, everyone. I am happy to recognize our wonderful care and safety staff. Whereas the safety and security of students, staff, and school communities are essential to a positive and productive learning environment. Whereas School Security Staff Appreciation Month recognizes the vital role that school security personnel, administrators, teachers, and community partners play in ensuring the well-being of all who enter our schools. Whereas school security professionals demonstrate dedication, vigilance, and care to help prevent emergencies, respond to incidents, and build trusting relationships with students and families. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Richmond Public Schools hereby recognizes the month of October 2025 as School Security Appreciation Month and calls upon students, staff, families, and community members to join in honoring the individuals who helped make our schools safe places to learn, grow, and succeed. Congratulations, security staff.
Good evening, school board. I am here with the three educational technology integrator leads Mercedes Buck, Jocelyn Verdi, and Carla Wood to recognize Digital Citizenship Week.
Hello, my name is Mercedes Buck. Richmond Public Schools Digital Citizenship Week, October 2025 recognition. Whereas Richmond Public Schools is committed to preparing students to be responsible, respectful, and safe citizens in an increasingly digital world. And whereas Digital Citizenship Week provides the opportunity to highlight the importance of guiding students in the ethical, safe, and effective use of technology. And.
Whereas digital citizenship includes fostering skills in online safety, responsible and ethical use of technology, data privacy, digital literacy, communication and etiquette, rights and responsibilities, and overall health and wellness in the digital world. And whereas teachers, staff, and families play a critical role in modeling and supporting positive digital habits that prepare students for success in school, work, life, and.
Whereas Richmond Public Schools recognizes that teaching digital citizenship is essential to cultivating empowered learners who can think critically, behave responsibly, and contribute positively to digital communities. And whereas during the third week of October, schools across the division will engage in lessons, activities, and discussions that promote the thoughtful and ethical use of technology. And therefore, be it proclaimed that Richmond Public Schools recognizes the third full week of October 2025 as Digital Citizenship Week and calls upon all students, educators, staff, families, and community members to join in promoting safe, responsible, and respectful digital practices.
Together, we affirm our commitment to preparing every student to thrive in an interconnected world while upholding the values of integrity, respect, and equity in both digital and face-to-face interactions. Thank you.
For our final proclamation, we have Walk, Bike, and Roll to School Day. Whereas Walk, Bike, and Roll to School Day is a national event that encourages students and families to choose active transportation options that promote healthy habits, reduce traffic congestion, and support cleaner air. Whereas walking, biking, or rolling to school fosters independence, increases physical activity, and helps students arrive at school alert and ready to learn. Whereas this initiative builds connection among families, schools, and communities and highlights the need for safe, accessible routes to school for all children. Whereas Richmond Public Schools is committed to student wellness, safety, and environmental responsibility and proudly supports efforts that make walking, biking, and rolling to school a viable and celebrated choice. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Richmond Public Schools hereby recognizes October 8th, 2025 as Walk, Bike, and Roll to School Day and calls upon students, families, staff, and community members to participate in this important day and support ongoing efforts to create a culture of active transportation across our schools. Thank you, Mr. Kamras.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight to be recognized. We know it was a little bit challenging logistically speaking, but we do appreciate everybody coming and being recognized. We also understand it would be helpful if the students' voices were a little bit louder, so we will take care of that next time around. We are learning and growing and look forward to an even more celebratory November. So thank you, everyone, for your patience, your grace, and your understanding.
Thank you. Moving right along to 3.01 announcement. Mr. Hedges, Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a handful of announcements. First, the October 4th District Parent/Teacher Advisory Council meeting will be held at JB Fisher Elementary on the 22nd of this month at 5:30. If you are a teacher or a parent in the 4th District, you are welcome to attend. I encourage you to be there. The light refreshments will be served. Brown Middle School, Lucille Brown Middle School is having its Next Steps Breakfast this Saturday for its eighth graders. That's from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Southampton Elementary School is electing its new PTA officers on the 14th of this month, which is, again, it's at October 14th at 5:30. JB Fisher, this is really cute, on Friday at 9:00 a.m., they're going to be performing at the Richmond Folk Festival. So if you're available, I encourage you to go out and check that out. The Huguenot High School has been celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, and that includes quinceañera dresses that are on loan from students and families that are on display in the front of the school, and they're gorgeous, and I encourage you to see them. I hope they're still up. And if not, then we do have pictures that we can share. And then finally, Westover Hills Elementary is hosting a garden cleanup for their courtyard garden this Friday morning at 9:00 a.m. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you weren't there, you missed a treat. The East End Festival took place last, what, Saturday before last? It was supposed to have been in Shimerazo Park, but because of the weather, we had it inside of the MLK Middle School, and it was an event to be so proud of and then some. We started out with our students performing, including Destin Scott of Franklin Military Academy to sing the Star Spangled Banner. If you haven't heard him sing, you need to, and you're missing a treat. The Franklin Military Academy Choir performed, Shimerazo Elementary School's choir performed, the Armstrong High School dancers performed, and I was told that 500 Richmond Public Schools' All-City Band members were in attendance before I got there and performed. But I don't think we have quite 500 students in the All-City Band. But they were so, everybody was so delighted to have had a great, great celebration inside MLK. We thank Principal Cordell Watkins for being the host, along with Clovia Lawrence. I don't want to miss anybody. Antoinette Essa. It was a grand celebration to include the Richmond Symphony, Chorale, oh, the line goes on and on and on. But we're sponsored by Bond's Accords, and this is our, this was our eighth year. And what we do is to provide opportunities for our students in the 7th District and the 6th District, the East End's area schools, with instruments, paraphernalia to make creative art pieces. Thus far, we've raised 500,000. We haven't gotten a report yet from this year, but we put in place a dance studio, and it goes on and on and on. So thank you for those of you that attended, and thank you so very much to our children and our families that attended as well. The other item is East End on the Hill, Schools on the Hill. Shimerazo Elementary School, Bellevue Elementary School, and Henry Marsh had a festive family outing as they do every year at the Shimerazo Playground, not the park. And it's a fun opportunity with vendors and time to land, line dance, and just all type of toys and other artifacts per se that children can partake in. It's a great family evening, and it's always well-attended. So if you're in the 7th District, yes, we are celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ricard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know this was mentioned last night, but I did want to thank all our partners with secondary student success and the Richmond Technical Center. They put on a lovely breakfast for our business partners a few weeks ago. They put on a lovely breakfast for our business partners a few weeks ago, and the culinary students cooked a very delicious meal. And I just wanted to announce that if there are any business owners listening or in the audience, we are always looking for partnerships for our students, whether it's just a visit, a field trip, whether it is a mentorship, whether it is an internship, we will make whatever work so that our students have some real-world experience out in Richmond. I also just wanted to announce, as always, if parents can sign up for Parents Square, in speaking to some of my principals, it is really helpful to have all our parents sign up for that, so they're receiving all the news. If you are unsure of how to sign up, you go to ParentsSquare.com, put in your information that's in our system, phone or email, but you can also contact the school. But it's, I know that for me is how I get all my information for my students and RPS. And then three final announcements. Dogwood Middle School is having their October Showcase on Thursday. They do this, maybe not once a month, but at least every other month where the students, because it is a performing arts school forum, they have their art displayed, and that's from 5:00 to 7:00 on Thursday. Fox Elementary is doing a trunk-or-treat and fall movie on Thursday, October 30th at 5:30, and all are invited. And then just a special thanks to the Engagement Office and VCU, who was out at Carver a few weeks ago, once again welcoming our students, getting them pumped Friday, and then they, on a field day for the students, they could come out on the playground and have some fun.
Thank you. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you. I just have two quick ones. The Maymont Preschool is still looking for volunteers to help with grounds beautification. I posted that on social media. They're looking for a group of parents or community members who are interested in stopping by periodically and doing things like, you know, taking care of dead plants that are on the grounds, beautification of, you know, I mean, there's some debris that's been there for quite a while, and just helping out with just general, making the front of the school look more welcoming for our children. So, that call is still out. If you're interested, please call Principal Pride at Maymont Preschool, or you can reach out to me, and I'll connect you with her. Also, on October 14th at 6:30, there is a, it is actually a Caroline Neighborhood Association meeting, but the topic will be the Second Serve Tennis Proposal. I know that there are quite a few people who are interested in that. The representatives from that organization will be there. I'll be there, and so will Councilwoman Lynch. So, that will take place at Unity Church, which is over by Burr Park. So, come out if you are interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to share out that on October the 15th, I am hosting a town hall at Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. Beyond the Score is the title. We have several members from the academic team. The Superintendent's Cabinet will be there discussing the new SOL Cut Scores and how do we move forward with the information that we have been provided thus far. So, this is an opportunity for our division, our parents, our community to come out and hear the direction of the Office of Accountability and the Office of Student Assessment with the Virginia Department of Education, and how Richmond City Public Schools will be prepared. We will take on the lift. We will address the task together regarding the new SOL Cut Scores, and dinner will be provided. And the school and the division that has the most staff present will receive a party for me. I'm just saying. So, that's my. And I hope y'all heard me. Can you, I should have asked that first. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jafari?
Thanks, Madam Chair. And good evening. A couple of announcements for the Rockless 8th District. The district is excited about the move, the proposed move, the contemplated move of the Tech Center tomorrow's street. We're really looking forward to that in the district as more space. I certainly want to thank all of those who played a part in making that decision to include the 8th District in there and to use that space. Now, I want to extend a hearty thank you for all the services and all of the work that was done at the back-to-school nights at each of our 8th District Schools, the most recent one being at Summer Hill. I wasn't able to speak with the custodial staff. She just left out kind of early, but I did recognize her. But again, my thanks go out to Principal Doxy and the way that they rolled out the red carpet, and for all the families that turned out that evening. Okay, I wanted to also give an, take the opportunity to thank Ms. Latisha Irby, who happens to be present. I wanted to thank her for her volunteering efforts to be on the AI Task Force panel. And it's very critical that Richmond Public Schools not only reaches out to, but that we are able to engage parents who actually have youngsters in their school system. That's very important, not just to know what's going on in their school buildings, but also because they have firsthand, they can firsthand see how our youngsters are interacting with technology and how it's being taken into our schools. So, again, Ms. Irby, if you can just stand one moment. I know you didn't come for that, but it's all good, and we certainly appreciate you. When also, she wasn't able to continue because she has those youngsters in Richmond Public Schools and kind of got more time-consuming than she was able to do. But we want to reach out to other volunteers. If you want to volunteer, you can contact our clerk here, or you can reach directly out to me to volunteer to be on the AI Task Force. And I'm really looking forward to the phones just ringing off the hook here. You gotta be positive, right? Okay. And lastly, I did get the opportunity to meet with Katie Rhodes and Director Sean Miller, who were down at the 100 Block Everett Street Boys and Girls Club office. And what we're trying to work with, we're trying to work on getting some transportation so that we can more fully utilize the after-school services in the Bush Hall community. And that's, we talk about food deserts, but that's kind of like a rec desert over in there. The youngsters do have access to Bush Hall and the rec services there, but we're trying to work on getting some transportation so that we can get the youngsters not only taken away from there in afternoons, but to also bring them back. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Bear with me. I have a lot of announcements, which means great things are happening in the 9th District. First and foremost, I'll have to go back a little bit. Want to give a shout out to J.L. Francis, who just recently had their convocation on September 26th. Unfortunately, because I just recently had surgery, I was not able to attend, but it's always a joy to see the representation that comes out. They'll also be having, J.L. Francis will also be having a career day, which is always exciting. Last year, they had a helicopter, well, before last, they had a helicopter come out, and pilots talked to the children, as well as Mayor Avula came out to speak with the children. So, this year is going to be just as exceptional, and that is at 9, from 9:00 to 1:30 on October 24th. We also want to give a shout out to Reed Elementary School on September 24th. They had their first parent council meeting. I regret that I wasn't able to attend because of my current situation, but I heard that it was an amazing turnout, and that we're looking forward to hearing more about what the parent council will be able to share moving forward. Several schools in the 9th District celebrated Hispanic Heritage Night, which was amazing. So, fabulous pictures were shown and seen, and so we're really excited about that. I want to give the board a shout out. We will be doing our BSBA Board Governance Training coming up, yes, toward the end of this month. I believe it's October 28th, so looking forward to that, and just thanking our board colleagues for just the passion around continued governance and professional development. Councilwoman Nicole Jones has some amazing activities for the youth coming up in the 9th District. On, let me make sure I get the date right. We have on October 9th, which is this up-and-coming Thursday at 6:00 p.m. at South Side Community Center, we're having the Youth Explore the Narrative AI. And so, we're excited for those that have curious minds. It says, "From curiosity to confidence." We want to build confidence around the youth, around AI, so we welcome you all to come out. It is absolutely positively free. There's going to be a lot of brainstorming ideas, create logos and flyers. It's going to be an amazing opportunity to just get more in-depth in AI. Also, she will be having a 9th District Youth Town Hall coming up from 6:00 to 8:00. Let me make sure I get the right time for that. That's going to be on October 16th. And again, that will be at South Side Community Center. We're calling all youth from ages 12 to 18, show up. You will have an amazing time. It's going to be a night of fun, food, and future planning, so we hope that you can make it there. Want to make sure I didn't miss anything or anyone. I believe that is it. So, thank you so much for your time, and I hope that you'll be able to join us for some of these amazing events. Oh, wait, did I say Reed Elementary School will be having their Fall Festival on October 30th? And then also, the State of Schools event will be October 30th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Truth Building downtown. Thank you so much. All right, moving right along, we're going to go, Dr. Harris Mohammed has one more announcement she'd like to make. Okay, thank you. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I couldn't get my video to work before. Martin Luther King Junior Middle School is hosting their Harvest Festival on October the 11th. I believe it's from 11 until 3:00. Of course, on the campus of Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving right along to public information. Before we begin, Madam Clerk, if you could read for us the guidelines.
And I'd also like to ask those speakers that approach the podium to please sign the clipboard and pass it back so we can maintain efficiency with that portion of the public speaking. Thank you. Conduct of Speakers. Speakers shall state their full legal name prior to addressing the school board. Speakers will address the school board as a whole rather than individual school board members, the division superintendent, school board attorney, clerk, or any other staff. The school board will listen to comments but will not respond during the public information period. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to, one, campaign for public office, two, promote private business ventures, or, three, use profanity or vulgar language. If community members' comments during the public information session relate to school-based issues, the chair may refer that individual to Richmond Public Schools Administration for one-on-one consultation and follow-up. It is important that all community members who wish to participate in the public information period abide by the guidelines set forth in this policy. Refusal to abide by the policy result in the forfeiture of the remaining time that has been allotted to the speaker. Community members may express their views in writing in lieu of any oral presentation. Comments received in writing in lieu of an oral presentation will not be read during the meeting, but shall be posted to the school board platform, Board Docs.
Thank you. Before we transition and call the names, colleagues, I just want to share with you, at the present moment, we have just about, appears to be 31, is that right? 31 that have pre-registered, which according to the calculations will be about an hour and 17 minutes worth of public comment. Just want to get a pulse check in everyone's thoughts as relates to that. Typically, in the past, we've gone over about 15 minutes, but obviously, this is going to be quite an adjustment, and so want to get your thoughts and how we proceed. All right, with that being said, as I call your name, please come up to the podium. We would ask for the audience to please refrain from outbursts. I know it's very tempting, but we want to allow the speakers their opportunity to speak without disruption. Also, if you can refrain from clapping, we're certainly happy that you hold signs, give the spear fingers, what have you. But again, we just want to make sure that we have a good flow and there are no distractions from those that are speaking to give them an opportunity to share their thoughts. I'm going to call folks up five at a time. Why don't you come up? If you could just line up as Ms. Richardson has requested, please sign the clipboard and pass it back. That's just going to help us keep the flow going. We want to hear from all of you this evening, okay? With that being said, we have Ms. Alana Harris, Lakeisha Williams, Stephen Strauss, Grace Gentry, and Jacob Neal Helt. If you are present, please come forward. Alana Harris. It's okay if she's not present. Next up is Lakeisha Williams. And then Stephen Strauss, Grace Gentry, and Jacob Neal Helt. Please be reminded to state your name before speaking. Good evening. Microphone on.
Testing.
There we go. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Many of you may know me as Lakeisha Williams, a teacher, a parent, and a resident of the 8th and the 9th District. But I come to you tonight as one half of Whiff Can't Wait. The Whiff Reimagined Committee was created in 2021, 2022. Dr. Erin Brown spearheaded that committee with imagining what Whiff would be for the future. When she resigned, that committee no longer existed. And we're coming before you tonight asking you that you restart that committee, and that the 22 members of that committee, including myself and Tisha Irby, resume as members of the committee and continue engagement and updates on the Richmond High School for the Arts new school. That committee has not been engaged since 2023. The Family Engagement Office spearheaded that committee to make the community informed of the construction process. We have not been updated, and I come to you tonight to ask you to reinform us. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Strauss?
Good evening. My name is Stephen Strauss. I'm the Treasurer of the Richmond Education Association, 5th District resident and teacher at Huguenot. Today, I'm speaking as an individual and calling on the board to vote down the proposed changes to the collective bargaining resolution. Last month, this body rejected a public-facing maintenance resolution because the proposal was not put forth with involving the facilities team. The school board often stands by the idea that the community should have a seat at the table. Today, we're telling you, you have been excluded from the table. Will you all be consistent in your values and reject the collective bargaining resolution proposal, or will you not give us a seat at the table? It's true that collective bargaining costs money and time. Last year, the district spent more than $120,000 related to arbitration. Also, last year, RPS spent $225,000 to pay 30 teachers a $7,500 early signing bonus. I participated with new teacher orientation for the past three years. Every year, people tell me they chose RPS in part because it has collective bargaining and it has a union. Educators see the value in having a real seat at the table. It's more sustainable than huge signing bonuses. Collective bargaining also helps with. Collective bargaining also helps with retention. It gives education workers the ability to provide input into district policy and procedures. These are processes that will improve our working conditions and the learning conditions of the children we serve. I witnessed firsthand the value of this process for our office associates, family liaisons and other central office workers. Education workers, just like students, are more likely to be invested when they have input in decisions that affect them. We want to work with you all. We're willing to tell, we are telling you that our voice has not been reflected in this process or document. You believe in giving us a seat at the table, you will vote down these proposed changes. Establish a collective bargaining committee composed of members of the school board, administration and unions to revise the resolution and direct the administration to move forward with collective bargaining as is. Together, we can move forward.
Thank you. Grace Gentry. Before you come up, good evening. I'll ask if Lisa Delio, please forgive me if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, is present, please come forward. Floyd Trumper and Andrea Bryant. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Grace Gentry and I'm a lead teacher at River City Middle School. And again, I'm speaking as an individual. I also want to remind everyone in the room that River City Middle School is the largest, most overcrowded and often designated hard-to-staff Title I middle school in our district. And it is also one of the largest middle schools in our Commonwealth. I come to Richmond from Ohio, a state that tried to crush collective bargaining for public employees and failed because its citizens refused to accept silence and complicity in a system that would drain them dry rather than recognize their right to dignity and their work. Once I earned my master's degree in TSAL, I could have chosen any district in the Commonwealth or the country, but I chose to stay at River City and Richmond Public Schools because of the potential of the promises made by collective bargaining. If both the union and the school board hold integrity and compassion as our guiding principles, because yes, this is a negotiation and every worker in this city knows when the house is stacking the deck. To be clear, I stayed at River City, one of our hardest-to-staff schools, one of the most poorly designed school buildings I have ever seen in a metropolitan area, a building without sufficient restrooms for staff or students. And still, I stayed because I believed our promises that here in the former capital of the Confederacy, workers' voices, the voices of Black, Brown, female, working-class public employees would be honored and bargaining would be fair. Why is that promise on the line? This very school board, not long ago, made history as the very first school board, the very first district in Virginia to grant collective bargaining rights in 43 years. That was the dream made real, our moment of courage and vision. The Richmond Education Association celebrated a new era of partnership and trust between our educators and the school building that represents us, our families and our students. The underlying agreement strikes out the right of union representatives to meet with employees during the workday, to welcome new hires or to address orientations.
Thank you, Ms. Gentry. Jacob Neil Helt.
Hello. My name is Jacob Neil Helt, they/them. I am on the REA District Board and I am a history and lead teacher at RHSA. Today I speak for myself. Today I am sharing the listed priorities that REA members in the License and Support Staff units each agreed for our second contract negotiations. These were shared with all members earlier this year, which means they were also shared with Mr. Camaras since he is a member of REA. When we plan to negotiate, we hope to be transparent as possible. With that said, I also want to address three things that were vocalized yesterday when the changes to the resolution were presented. First, it was discussed that negotiations happen best when everybody assumes good intentions. This is true. But these changes that were proposed to collective bargaining resolution actively prevent staff from being able to fully negotiate. These aren't about what is being negotiated. This is about allowing negotiations to happen. Good intentions do not matter when they create harmful outcomes. Two, the budget is of course at the center of the conversations surrounding collective bargaining. When we take the reasons given for these, if we take the reasons given for these proposed changes at face value, then we can assume that staff are too incompetent to be able to consider budgetary shortfalls when negotiating. It is a slap in the face to see you praise the district for historic gains that have begun to happen since our first CBA was enacted in the 2023 school year. And then follow that up by saying that the staff who are at the center of those gains don't understand the problems that the district faces. I'll skip the third one. All I want to say is, let's stop simply talking about respect. All of these proposed changes can and should be brought to the negotiation table, not made in a way that limits the voices of those who are most affected by them. Let's move forwards, not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Delio, sorry.
I appreciate the effort there. Delao, Delao. Yes, thank you. Good evening, buenas noches. My name is Lisa Delao and I'm a teacher at Huguenot High School and I live in the Ninth District. I'm here today to share on the following issues and ask you, first, to vote no on the superintendent's proposed changes to collective bargaining; second, to provide more tangible support and protections to our families afraid of being targeted by ICE; and finally, to change the policy on clear backpacks, though I love Jevanya and I adore everything she has to say, and allow students the option to bring a non-clear backpack. First, our working conditions in schools and on buses are our students' learning conditions. When teachers don't get uninterrupted planning periods, it directly impacts our students' learning conditions. When there isn't clean air in the schools because of mold and asbestos, it directly impacts students' health as well as staff. Oversized classrooms directly impact students' learning conditions. We are consistently advocating for our students when we are advocating for ourselves through collective bargaining. We deserve to have our feedback be heard. That means when we share our opinions on these proposed changes, we ask that you listen with an open heart and mind. When my students give me feedback about how class is going for them, I do my best to listen and act accordingly. Thank you to the school board members who have heard our overwhelming feedback. I urge everyone to listen to us by voting no on these changes. Secondly, what is RPS doing to protect our students and families from ICE? Ooh, okay. There have been multiple ICE sightings on the south side at school bus stops the last few weeks. Parents and students are fearful. What are you willing to do to protect our students and their families? And what resources are you willing to put forward? Finally, I strongly urge that you make it optional to use clear backpacks. I've asked my students about this and they all agree. It seems like every other week, every week, I have a student who asks me for a new backpack because theirs is broke. Many students replace their backpacks multiple times. Thank you.
Thank you. As Chloe Tempree comes up, I'd ask if Sophia Barbieri, I'm so sorry, I know I'm not pronouncing that correctly, my apologies, Charlotte Hare and Sean Casser also come up. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chloe Trumper. I'm a teacher at Bushaw Middle School and I'm here to address two important issues this evening. First, I'm disappointed in these proposed changes that undercut our collective bargaining. If you all truly care about the success of RPS students, then you need to support and fight for your teachers. According to the RPS website, "Love is ensuring equity. Public education must be about more than just good instruction. It must be about creating a more equitable society." Taking power from the people does not create a more equitable society and will cause teachers to leave RPS. Teacher turnover is a huge equity issue. High rates of teacher turnover harm student achievement and creates lasting instability for our students. Multiple studies have shown that collective bargaining agreements are associated with reduced teacher turnover, especially in high-poverty schools like ours. I'm urging you all to vote against the superintendent's proposed changes. Secondly, what is RPS doing to protect our students and their families from ICE? There have been multiple ICE sightings on the south side of bus stops in the last few weeks. Parents and students are fearful. A few RPS parents have been taken. That leads me to ask you these questions. What are you willing to do to protect our students and their families? Saying they are safe does not make them safe. What is specifically being enacted to ensure they are safe? What resources are being put forward to ensure our students are safe at their bus stops? What resources and supports are being provided to families impacted by ICE kidnappings? We have students who have had parents deported. That takes a huge emotional and financial toll on a family. All I hear RPS say is, "Lead with love, teach with love, serve with love." Please stop saying these things and do them. It is time to act. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Bryant.
My name is Andrea Bryant and I currently serve as the President of the Richmond Education Association. I don't take this position lightly and work diligently to represent our members to the best of my ability. I am here because changes to the collective bargaining resolution have been made without the collective. The REA and other unions are frustrated because we were not given a fair chance to collaborate. Collaboration on changes to the collective bargaining resolution could have started in July when I took office. Collaboration could have started in August with good faith and a true chance to build trust and assume positive intent. Yet, this did not happen. The unions were provided with a detailed overview of changes to the collective bargaining resolution on September 18th and told that these changes would be presented two and a half weeks later. We received the actual language changes to the collective bargaining resolution on September 24th, which left two weeks to try to process these changes, their ramifications, and propose our own ideas with the short deadline provided. I even asked if the changes could be retracted so we could have collective discussion and that was brushed off with the statement that changes would be presented on October 6th. This type of behavior contributes to an already tense relationship between the workers and the RPS administration. How could we build trust and goodwill with behavior such as this? Financially speaking, we understand that the school board has a fiduciary responsibility to Richmond Public Schools, but there are many things that the RPS workers want that don't necessitate additional funds or provide good reasoning to remove negotiation from the table when funds are tight. Trust me, many workers are work living paycheck to paycheck, so we know what a tight budget means. Please trust that negotiations will be very mindful of the budget and many of the changes to the collective bargaining resolution do not have financial ramifications that help the district but have social and structural ramifications that can hurt the workers. Also, let's not be hung up on the rhetoric. Every campaign has its extremes, from one end of the spectrum to the other. The rhetoric should be an indicator of how serious of an issue this is to the workers of RPS. It could lead, it should lead to more, a more dissecting practice when looking at documents such as this. One day or two weeks is not enough time to truly review a document like this and break down how it affects everyone involved. Subjective language in the collective bargaining resolution can erode our free speech, especially in our school buildings, especially when anything could be misconstrued as interfering in the day-to-day operations of RPS or engaging behavior that negatively impacts the working conditions or environment of any RPS employee. Lastly, I ask that you vote no to these changes. We need an opportunity to come together, truly together, and make changes to the resolution that yield to the true definition of compromise, a settlement of differences by mutual concessions. Additional time would not hurt this process and bargaining without any changes to the collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, could you pronounce your last name for me?
It's Barbieri.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Good evening. My name is Sophia Barbieri and I'm a proud teacher at Henderson Middle School. When I graduated college in December of 2024, I was thrilled to be hired into what I thought was a truly progressive district, one that made history as the first in Virginia to recognize the right of educators to collectively bargain. That meant something to me. It meant we were building a future where teachers had a voice, where we could stand together and fight for the conditions our students deserve. But that promise feels like it's being broken. I've seen the instability our students face firsthand. Last spring, I even taught Superintendent Camaras's own son as his fourth English teacher in a single year. That was my introduction to this career. That's not just a staffing problem. It's the result of a system that keeps pushing workers to their breaking point. And now, instead of strengthening our ability to fix that system, these proposed changes try to silence and divide us. Let's be clear. Collective bargaining is not a privilege granted by leadership. It is a right that workers won through struggle. And when any administration, no matter how polished the language, tries to weaken that right, it's not to be mistaken as reform. It's regression, plain and simple. We, the educators of RPS, will not be intimidated and we will not be divided. Our power comes from solidarity. I urge the board to vote no on these anti-worker changes and stand on the side of labor, justice and democracy in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, if you could, I know it's very tempting to refrain from clapping. I'd appreciate it. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Hare. I am the only CTE teacher at Richmond Community High School where we are very proud of our Pharaohs every single day. And I come to you tonight speaking on behalf of the proposed changes to collective bargaining. So I remember what it was like before we had a collectively bargained contract. Every time we turned around, we had to come down here and beg and plead and beg and plead to be treated like human beings with people with rights. We thought we had gotten past that juncture with the collective bargaining contract. So tonight I'm going to ask you to do something that nobody's asked you to do before and I'm going to ask you to put yourself in our shoes. Put yourself in our shoes and think about how you would feel if this had happened to you. We understand that you are our employer. So I ask you, would you want your employer to treat you this way? Would you want them to put these changes to you without your voice being at the table? REA is only seeking to be a part of the solution. That means give us a seat at the table. Give us a seat at the table. I was a part of the first collective bargaining team. I know what it's like. Give us a seat at the table. Come to the table with honesty and with a real purpose of doing what's right for all of your employees. This is not right. So we ask you, I ask you, do you want these things done to you? If you answer no to that, then why would you do them to your own employees? Because trust and believe, if you told us when you came to us for recommendation and endorsement and you said you believed in collective bargaining, we will remember how you vote on this and we will make it known to all of the constituents of this city that you changed your mind.
Thank you, appreciate it. As Sean Casser comes forward, I'd also like Dr. Carl Vaughn, Daryl Turner, Catherine Flowers and Beth Almore to come forward. Sean Casser. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sean Cassar and I'm Labor Co-Chair for the Richmond Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. Years ago, after working together collaboratively, this board and the unions put forward a historic collective bargaining resolution. It was the first of its kind in the state and truly one of the better agreements I've witnessed in my years of labor work. These changes to the resolution proposed today are a disgrace to that achievement. This amendment is full of union-busting provisions, including limitations to interacting with union representatives, union recruitment and bargaining. Today I'm going to try to cover the three larger structural changes I find to be the most harmful. One, it limits the number of topics the unions can bargain over to just three. Creating a completely arbitrary limit based on fear is not acting in good faith, defeats the entire purpose of negotiations and guarantees austerity. While widely reported mold, asbestos, extreme temperatures and outcome inequality plagues our district, this would make it near impossible for the union to continue to advocate for the changes needed to actively eliminate them. Changes that can only be identified by empowering those who have to work with all these problems, not by mandate from a political body who ignored them for decades, who has shown an inability to take meaningful action even with millions of CIP funding won by union and community advocacy, nor by an unelected superintendent who received 10% raise and new bonuses while leading the call for common sense budget precautions. Two, it makes bargaining completely impartial. It makes the school board the neutral arbiter during an impasse, which is not only unfair to the board members, but is also completely laughable. The school board is management, plain and simple. Three, it gives the administration the ability to completely nullify any provisions that its opinion aren't fundable. It removes the existing collaborative process and instead gives all the power to management to decide. With the superintendent writing the budget, scoping its discussion to a fraction of its provisions and not giving the board an acceptable amount of time to review or amend the full document, this will happen most of the time.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Carl Vaughn.
Good evening, Superintendent Camaras and board members. You are fully aware, and I'm Carl Vaughn, founder of Jump Start U2. I understand the former Thompson Middle School may be discussed tonight and I want to ensure my request to designate the building- my request to designate the building as surplus is part of that conversation. You know my purpose and why ending the cycle of underuse matters. Tonight, I'll highlight one key point. We are actively doing the work, and Thompson is essential to that momentum. For 13 years, we've operated without a permanent base, major funding, or bailout, yet we've delivered results year after year. Securing Thompson isn't the end, it's the beginning. Ownership unlocks leverage. With Thompson, we can attract backers, secure renovation funding, and cover two to three years of operation. Without it, we remain stuck in survival mode. JSU2 brings a plan and a legacy. 500 families enrolled in our Life Skills Academy, 300 housed, 100 secured leases, several pursuing homeownership, 500 graduates ready to rise and reinvest in Richmond. Weekly presence at the Homeless Resource Center, hand-demand services in underserved neighborhoods, youth and family engagement across all four quadrants of Richmond, partnerships with Senior Connect, VCU, Virginia Union University, and Virginia State University, yielding two dozen interns and over a dozen work-study students, serving as program advocates. I've led schools others gave up on. I've served the city for over 40 years. I've done the work with no building, no budget, and no bailout. We're not asking for a handout, we're offering a handout. Let's be consistent, let's be courageous, let's surplus Thompson and give Richmond another chance to rise. Meanwhile, remember the H-U6 principle, called H-U6, that I presented last board meeting. Shoulders high, H, chin up, U. We stand upright like clockhands at six. Even when the winds howl, we don't bow. Even when the walls shake, we don't break. Six times we fall, six times we rise. On the seventh, we build. This is H-U6. This is us. And remember, we can do all things through Christ who strengthens us, Philippians 4:13. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Darrell, is it Darrell?
Darrell.
Darrell Turner, thank you.
Hi, good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Camaras. My name is Darrell Turner. I am a pre-K teacher at MLK Preschool. And I come before you tonight because I think back to December 6, 2021. That was the night that the Richmond School Board passed the collective bargaining resolution. It was a collaborative effort between RPS and the Richmond Education Association. There was collaboration throughout the process to get to that point. That collaboration continued after the resolution was passed, when we went to the bargaining table. And that collaboration continued when we celebrated the victory of being the first school district in the Commonwealth of Virginia in nearly 50 years to pass a collective bargaining resolution. So we collaborated in the celebration. So when I heard that one of my fellow union members and the administration was proposing changes that takes away our seat at the table, I was shocked. You know, I wondered what happened to that collaboration. During that time, I served as the Vice President of the REA, and I was in the room for all those negotiating meetings. And I can tell you, the gains that we got in collective bargaining, you know, made sure that our workers felt loved, seen, and supported. And in this district, we often talk about leading with love, but I have to ask the question, where is the love when we want to take away the seat at the table? Because here is the thing, when we support our teachers,
Thirty seconds.
we also support our students. Because remember, our educators' working conditions are our students' learning conditions. And it, I encourage you all to vote no on these changes, because if you take away our voices at the table, you're also failing your promise of supporting the workers and our students in RPS. So vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. As Catherine Flowers and Beth Almore come forward, I also ask Mariah White, Sharon Gilbert, James Smith, and Brian Payton to come forth as well. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Flowers, and I'm a teacher at Huguenot High School. I come here tonight to ask that you please reject the current proposed changes to our collective bargaining agreement. I'm a recent transplant to RPS as I moved here from Florida in the summer of last year. The last school board meeting I attended was in Florida when I went to speak about the proposal to strike language of LGBTQ inclusion from the district handbook. Despite the concerns of the community of parents, teachers, and students coming together to urge the district to vote against it, they moved forward, taking away protections from a very at-risk community. I have such different hopes tonight. I stand in front of a very different school board. I was here for the elections, I saw the platforms you ran on, so I know that this school board and our superintendent are committed to fostering conversations and that you celebrate the diverse perspectives here within RPS. That messaging and your commitment to working together with the union are part of what I love about working here. It's part of why I moved. I'm asking you to demonstrate those commitments by voting to reject this proposal. I know that the budget is tight, and I understand that you are under an immense amount of pressure. I am urging you not to sacrifice the power of collective bargaining in the name of efficiency or streamlining. Good conversations are messy. Having more space at the table is difficult. Oh, I turned it off, I'm sorry. But I truly believe the best changes happen when we have collaboration. Once again, I ask you to please reject the proposed changes to our collective bargaining agreement. We have a wonderful community here in Richmond. Let's work on making our schools better together. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Almore? Not present.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, school board, Madam Chair, and Superintendent Camaras. I am speaking on behalf of an organization tonight, the Richmond Crusaders for Voters. I am the Education Chair for the Richmond Crusaders for Voters. The Education Committee will focus to improve our educational concerns at every school level and educate our citizens, our voters, on the performance, the policies, parent rights of Richmond Public Schools. First, our action items will be literacy, of course. So we're looking for a literacy plan, absentee, chronic, dropout rate, behavior, receiving reports for too many high flyers in certain schools, what are you doing, bullying, overcrowding, and disparities in our schools. The Richmond Crusaders for Voters will remain attentive to the concerns of our constituents as well as our communities. We will respond accordingly, and we will bring the community to you. What we really want to know tonight, is your collective bargaining really equitable? See, there are primary positions that are omitted from your CBA. And I'm really not sure why there is not agreement with everyone that is in red here tonight, because they were in agreement just a year ago. So there should be some type of togetherness, collaboration, because we know on the board, and I know you all know, all nine of you know, that no one on this board has the expertise of law here. And we went through this a year ago. It's not as simple as you think. We must be able to treat our people, our teachers, our students with dignity and respect. This cannot be every year, every year, the same thing for collective bargaining. Bring everyone to the table. We have a lawyer over here, and you need to use your attorney for negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Gilbert?
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board. My name is Sharon Gilbert, and I'm a very proud REA member and the Administrative Office Associate at William Fox Elementary School for over 20 years. Let me just start by saying that I know any of these union members are your enemies. I am one of the five who worked extremely hard to get collective bargaining for our school-based Administrative Office Associates and Office Associates, and I want to continue to build on that. I could be at home cooking dinner or working my second or my third part-time job, but it was important for me to be here, not only tonight, but also last night. And so I'm here before you tonight to ask you to vote no on the proposed changes to our collective bargaining resolution. Now, you often talk about giving workers a seat at the table, but a real seat means making decisions with us, not for us. These changes were written behind closed doors without any input from the very people they affect. This is not collaboration. We're being told these revisions aren't anti-union, but if that's the case, why keep unions out of the process until the last minute? And why hire an attorney with a long record of opposing collective bargaining, even lobbying against lifting the state ban? Calling these proposals small revisions doesn't change the truth, they weaken the progress we fought for and put at risk RPS' historic achievement as the first district in Virginia to secure bargaining rights. So tonight, you have a choice. You can stand with us, and we can work together, or you can continue the secrecy and unilateral power. I urge you to reject these changes and to vote no. It benefits not only us and our students, but our community and our parents as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. James Smith? As he comes forward, I'd also like Allison Kaplan, Melissa Johnston, and Reverend William Nicky.
Good evening. I'm Jim Smith, President of Local 592. First, I'd like to thank you for proven air representation of the managers and coordinators last night, so thank you for that. Second, we finally have a ratified tentative agreement with the principals and the assistant principals and... Yes, it's on. We finally have a ratified tentative agreement with the principals, assistant principals, and directors. I think that will be before y'all next month for approval, and look forward to that. Speaking on the changes to the resolution, one that gives me the most heartburn is the changing of the talking points. They have, instead of having groups of talking points, they've individualized them, which will restrict negotiating quite a bit, and I think it would be detrimental. You know, there's a lot of things, we've spent a lot of time with you, Negotiating Committee. They know how to say no. They can talk about things, they respectfully decline things that they feel would be harmful for the district. But there are things that we talked about that cost nothing. You know, one example of that was goal-setting meetings that were held here. It was a problem with the principals having to get parking, not knowing how long they were gonna be here. We requested they be moved to a school, they moved them to a school, no cost to no one. But if we're limited on what we can discuss, then those free items that have no expense go unattended to. So the main thing we object to is breaking the talking points into individual items instead of groups of items. So thank you for your consideration.
Distinguished members of this governing body, my name is Brian Payton. I'm the President and Principal Officer of Teamsters Local 322. Thank you for granting me the opportunity to stand up here and speak. I will be brief. A lot has been said this evening regarding the upcoming vote, potential changes. My quick question to this, this group, this board of fine people, is, there's a lot of talk about partnership and collaboration. What kind of, what type of partners are really effective, truly effective? You can either have a collaborative partnership, or you can have a silent partner. The recent changes that have been suggested have stirred up a lot of controversy. What you see right here, right now, what has manifested in front of this governing body is people banding together, making their collective voices heard, and saying that they're not gonna co-sign this. You have a decision to make, I urge you to vote no, I urge you to do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Allison Kaplan. I'm the school counselor and the REA rep for Elizabeth Wright Elementary School. The new proposed language in the CBA resolution says that employees shall not engage in behavior that negatively impacts the working environment, and that organizing activities must not interfere with work duties, including planning time. For two years, I advocated regarding RPS's ongoing violations of federal mandates surrounding asbestos. If during school hours I had looked through our asbestos management binder, would this have been considered part of an organizing activity? If during their planning time a colleague informed me that the moldy water spot on their ceiling had returned, could this be considered contributing to a negative work environment? Could we face reprimand? Had the proposed subjective language been in the resolution back in April of 2024, RPS would probably be 16 years in violation of federal mandates rather than 15, and students at staff at red might still be kicking up asbestos dust in the auditorium. I may not have felt comfortable speaking up in regards to these violations for fear of facing reprimand due to these vague policies. Last night, a member of this board commented that everyone in the room was getting along and that no one was having their free speech restricted, and that the school board and administration does not have an aggressive campaign as such an aggressive campaign as the REA, and therefore, the narrative is skewed in the media. Here's the thing, the original resolution was created by a committee that included union representatives. Refusing to return to the, to the committee to discuss proposed changes is restricting our communication. Yes, everyone was getting along last night, but we were also not permitted to speak while this matter was discussed. Tonight, the same night that the vote will be conducted, is the only time since we received the proposed changes that we even have the opportunity to offer public comment. So yes, maybe the union's public campaign has been a bit more aggressive, but we were also left with little time and a few options. We would have much preferred to address these changes amicably and fairly during committee meetings. Refusing us this opportunity is not negotiating in good faith.
Thank you. Melissa Johnston?
If someone has the clipboard, would you please pass it forward?
Greetings, Chair, members of the school board, and Superintendent Camaras. My name is Melissa Johnston. I'm proud to teach at Thomas Jefferson High School, where I'm in my 24th year. I'm speaking this evening to urge you to vote no on the proposed amendments to the collective bargaining resolution. I've reviewed the proposed revisions and the additional edits the RPS administration proposed just this weekend. These edits are insufficient to address the concerns of your employees, our collective bargaining units, and the unions that represent us at the table. As an example of how these proposed changes serve to silence the educational workforce, I would like to turn your attention to pages four and five, which describe the parameters of identifying topics of negotiation. Please note that in the current unrevised resolution, there are 10 topics that are inclusive of subtopics. For the first round of negotiations, each side was able to bring two of these topics to the table. The proposed changes have crossed out these topics and parsed the subtopics out, raising them to the level of topics. We see a proposal to move from 10 topics to 25. If we then extend the limit to the number of topics each party can bring to the negotiation table, it is evident that this is a move to imply harsh limits to the scope of each round of bargaining. Complicate this with the proposal to move from a three-year contract to a five-year contract, and opportunities that each bargaining unit has to negotiate a better workplace disappear again. Please understand that this is a move to limit speech. If we are held to an arbitrarily low number of tightly-defined topics, we are limited in our speech. If we negotiate less often, we are limited in our speech. No matter how many times the phrase shall in no way be construed
Thirty seconds.
as a restriction on the individuals constitutionally protected freedom of expression is entered in this document, for all practical purposes, the proposal before you is an effort to limit employee speech. Please support a collaborative and expressive relationship with your workforce. Vote no to the changes to amend the collective bargaining resolution.
Thank you. As you come forward, I'd also like Nicky. As you come forward, I'd also like Nikki Omnizzi. My apologies if I pronounce your name wrong. Dennis Mallory, Tina Buchno, and Jonathan Mueller, if you could come forward as well. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is William McGee. I am the president of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference here in Richmond, Virginia. But I don't come to you as president of SCLC. I come to you as a former teacher and administrator, administrator for 20 years here with the Richmond Public School System. My first job, I was assigned to teach at John F. Kennedy High School, and I taught there with perfect attendance for six years. After that, when I returned to Richmond Public Schools, I worked for 20 years as an administrator here at Richmond Public Schools, serving in many schools, including Armstrong High School on Cool Lane. So I had the honor of working in both John F. Kennedy High School on Cool Lane and Armstrong High School on Cool Lane. I want to ask you a question, and be honest with you, everybody in here. If you all tried to change the name, there are two schools in the city of Richmond named after presidents. One of them is Thomas Jefferson High School, and the other one is John F. Kennedy High School. I dare you all to try to change the name of Thomas Jefferson High School. I really do. You know what would happen, all things would happen. So I'm saying to you, it's a win-win, and it's a win-loss situation here. If you change the name to Armstrong Kennedy, Armstrong still wins. If you don't include John F. Kennedy, all of my former students, and there are hundreds of them, who are very responsible citizens, they would, they lose all of their identity. They don't have any high school to say they went to in Richmond. People say, "Well, where is John F. Kennedy High School?" "Oh, it's at 2300 Cool Lane," and then now the name is Armstrong High School. Try to change the name of Thomas Jefferson. Thank you all very much. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless everybody here, and I'm with the union.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Omniza. I am a proud union member and a representative of Unite here, Local 25. I'm also an RPS parent. My daughter started kindergarten this year at Bellevue. It's funny, I'm having deja vu right now. Several years ago, I stood in this very same building, different room, this one's smaller, it's a little hotter, but I stood in this very same room alongside very many of these people, and we were fighting for collective bargaining rights for Richmond City workers. Now we're standing here again and standing up for the criminally underpaid and overworked employees of Richmond Public Schools and arguing the same nonsense, despite the fact that in 2021 and 22 report that Mr. Camaras himself commissioned, described the devastating job losses experienced by this district, where one in four teachers chose to resign, and how much of a problem retention was, despite the fact that study after study confirms that collective bargaining leads to higher wages, better benefits, improved safety, increased job satisfaction, and the fact that unions foster greater equality by reducing wage gaps based on race and gender and are associated with lower worker turnover and increased productivity. And despite all of those, we are still here, and somehow, the superintendent has unilaterally decided to silence RPS workers and go against the wishes of this city and its residents. These workers deserve better. You know what? I was going to stand here and give you all these statistics and things and the fact of how much money, their personal money they spend, but then I went to the bathroom before this, when we were in the overflow room, and I met a teacher, and she worked here before COVID, and she didn't have paid parental leave, and she had to use short-term disability. Sir, long after you're gone and a distant memory of a mid-level bureaucrat going against the needs and demands of this city, we will all be here, we will still be fighting. I urge you all to please vote against this disgusting, union-busting proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
From the other school board, good evening. My name is Dennis Mallory, and I am the chairman of the John F. Kennedy High School Alumni and Friends Scholarship Fund, as well as the event planner of the multi-class John F. Kennedy reunion events. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the survey that was done in the school for the name change. And when I looked at the results, I saw that the students and the administration of Armstrong was not in favor of the name change. However, the results of the parents and the community favored the name change. So I would not ask the question, "Well, which one is more important?" because I know you will agree, all of them are important. However, I will ask the question, "Well, which one has more attention? Which one of the groups hang around longest?" Well, students come and go in four years, and staff, maybe come and go in four years, less or more. However, the parents and the community, they are forever, figuratively speaking. So when you make your vote on this name change, please consider that. Now, the administration suggested a plaque and a window showcase of Kennedy's history. But believe me, Kennedy history will not fit in a window showcase. We will suggest maybe a room designated as a museum. Okay? Now, we're not asking for the whole cake. In other words, to do that, we'll be asking you to change the name back to John F. Kennedy High School, Cougars, colors, scarlet and gold. We are not asking for half of the cake, which would be asking for John F. Kennedy or Armstrong Kennedy Jaguars, colors, gold and blue, mascot, the Jaguars. We are asking for a slice of the cake, and that would be to name the school Armstrong Kennedy. Armstrong would keep its status as a Wildcat, as a color orange and blue, it would keep its status quo. All we want is the name Kennedy on front of the building. But remember this, if John F. Kennedy High School was not built, where would Armstrong High School be, considering the fact that you had to turn it down, but you couldn't replace it? So thank you for your time, and have a good day.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Tina Bueno. I'm from River City Middle School here in Richmond. Some of you I've spoken to individually before, some of you maybe not as much, but I have been in public education for 21 years. I am proud to be part of RPS. I was very proud that RPS had this collective bargaining agreement, and we were very excited about going through the process and really representing our people and having a real seat at the table. One of the things that everyone wants in their job and their workplace is to feel as a professional, to be respected as a professional. And I know we have a lot of fine folks in front with a lot of good expertise, but I also know that the people behind me in red are the ones who get it done every day. They're the ones who walk in and make sure everybody is taken care of. They take care of our children every day. And I just think it's really important that we actually give them, give us all a real voice at the table, and we honor the original agreement. RPS has done a really great job of hiring some amazing workers. I love my coworkers that I work with. It's what keeps me here. But retention is not it. I'm in River City Middle School as well, and the turnover in that building is scary some years. So it really does worry me, and I know that with professionalism, that is something that's going to draw people to RPS. And if we're serious about retention, we're serious about transparency and making RPS better, then we're going to honor the original agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. As Jonathan Mueller comes forward, I'd also like Kathleen Whale, Adam Malinowski-Luie, sorry, Carol Brewer-Bauer, Patrick Cortez, and Gail Freeman. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Mueller. I am a union member. I am a union worker. I'm an organizer for Starbucks Workers United. And for those who don't know, Starbucks workers in Richmond and throughout the country have been attempting to get a contract enshrined for years. Our management has stalled, retaliated, and ignored our demands for better pay, dignity in the job site, and stability in our work hours. They've restricted how we can express ourselves. They've restricted our ability to afford rent and have even fired some of us for just wanting to make Starbucks a better place to work and a better place for everyone who doesn't work at Starbucks to get their coffee. I believe that this resolution as written is just as bad faith as what we see from Starbucks management. It ignores the real concerns of your employees, polices their expression of the First Amendment, and gives you all the ability to, just like Starbucks management, completely ignore the bargaining process. Just like us at Starbucks, these teachers, janitorial staff, support staff, bus drivers, counselors, all Richmond Education Association members want to make their schools the best learning environments for students through bargaining. After all, their working conditions are our students' learning conditions. I ask that you all vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kat Wall. I'm a former George With High School teacher. I'm a present River City teacher, and I serve on the REA Executive Board. I just want to know why we're here tonight. I find it so disturbing. I've been working all day. We all been working, all of us, and I find it deeply disturbing that the Camaras administration feels sufficiently emboldened to make such a proposal. In the first place, this was all supposed to be happening at the bargaining table. I already worked all day. There wasn't any soap or toilet paper in the bathrooms, okay, but I still had to come up here, get manhandled by our awesome CSAs. Someone talked to them and kept us all in a hot overflow room when there were seats available. I don't know what we're doing. Someone talked to them, someone intimidated them, and they're intimidating us. For years, this is why we're here, because for years in Richmond, we've been trying to get this collective bargaining going. I'm part of the, I'm part of a Southern workers group, and they look up to us a lot here in Richmond because of everything we've won. So I wanted to take us on a little history trip of what got us all here tonight. Back in the spring of 2021, the REA launched its collective bargaining card campaign. We held rallies to put pressure on everyone to pass an ordinance, December 2021. Y'all passed the collective bargaining ordinance, but we had to settle on a compromise resolution. It limited our scope of bargaining in the beginning on the first contract, but it was supposed to have opened up. This was the first public-sector collective bargaining ordinance passed in the state of Virginia after a 47-year ban on collective bargaining for public-sector workers was repealed. 2022, we finally had some negotiations that included everybody. Anyway, but we had to sign confidentiality documents with the union and management, and that only benefited you. June 2023 and 2024, our union faced challenges and repression, including bad faith bargaining by management, management retaliation of American Sign Language interpreters by trying to strip their tenure rights and worse than working conditions, a refusal to grant an unpaid leave of absence for the REA's president.
Thank you.
A whole lot more.
Good evening.
Good evening, school board. My name is Adam Malinowski-Lu, and I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'll start off by saying that education doesn't work when we place dollars over people. We cannot expect our students to be succeeding when we are not investing in our schools and when we're not investing in the honest and hard-working people that make our schools run. Our teachers and staff have one of the most important jobs in our country, and everything I just said, I would assume all of you would agree with, at least for the record. Yet, last night, several of you revealed yourselves to be in support of this initiative to change and weaken RPS workers' ability to collectively bargain. And that is also, to those of you who reveal that, revealing that you have different priorities over making our schools run better and improving the lives of our teachers and students. The community sees what you're doing, and that's why the community has turned out as it has tonight. I also would like to take a moment and commend those of you who did reaffirm your commitment to this community and to RPS workers and to students in RPS schools. But at the same time, to the rest of you who are attempting to actively mislead the public, we see what you're doing. If you, as members of this school board, don't feel that you're able to work with this union and with our teachers, then you should not hold your positions on this council. If you feel that you're not able to trust the hard-working teachers and staff that make our schools run, then you should not have your positions on the school board. If you feel that you need to mislead and confuse the public in order to do your job properly, then you should not be on this school board. Investing in our teachers and in our staff is the same thing as investing in our students. Attempting to fight our unions is the same thing as attempting to sabotage the futures of our students. This community sees through these anti-union lies that you have spread, which we've heard for the majority of our lives, and really, this community is resolute in not allowing these Trump policies to affect our community or to affect our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Patrick Cortez. I'm a history and social science teacher at Richmond High School for the Arts and a member of the Richmond Education Association, and I stand before you to voice my opposition to the last-minute changes to the resolution governing the collective bargaining process as proposed by the Camaras administration. The REA was only informed about these radical changes at the midnight hour, and at no point was the REA or any other labor union invited to participate as equal partners in a dialogue concerning the nature, scope, and purpose of these changes. But why speak of dialogue this evening? Take you on a philosophical detour. The theorist of progressive education, Pelo Frey, makes a distinction between two methods of teaching and learning. He explains that, on the one hand, there is dialogic education rooted in the principles of humanism, meaning freedom, self-determination, democratic participation, authentic communication, constructive criticism, and mutual respect. And in opposition to this vision stands the banking system of education, and Frey states that, "Under the banking model, the teacher-student relationship becomes an act of depositing, in which the students are the depositories and the teachers are the depositories." As an educator and lifelong learner, I adhere to Frey's democratic and dialogic vision in opposition to the undemocratic and bureaucratic nature of the banking model. So I decided to conduct a thought experiment. So let's consider the following scenarios, taken from Frey, and ask ourselves if they ring true when considering how RPS is approaching collective bargaining specifically and employer-employee relations more broadly. The employer issues communiques and directives, and the employees receive them. The employer knows everything, and the employees know nothing. The employer thinks, and the employees are thought about. The employer talks, and the employees listen meekly. The employer disciplines, and the employees are disciplined. The employer chooses and enforces his choice, and the employees comply. The employer acts, and the employees have the illusion of acting through the action of the employer. The employer chooses the program content, and the employees, who are not consulted, adapt to it.
Thank you.
Vote no.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Camaras. My name is Carol Bauer. I'm a nationally board-certified fourth-grade teacher, president of the Virginia Education Association, and a proud union member. I'm here tonight not just as a supporter of collective bargaining, but as someone who believes deeply in the power of educators and communities working together to transform schools. When Richmond adopted collective bargaining, it wasn't just a policy change. It was a promise, a promise to listen to the people, listen to the people who show up every day for our students, and that promise has delivered. I want to share with you some statistics. Since the collective bargaining agreement has been made, students in Richmond's pass rates have grown faster than the state, than the state in every subject, with sign scores jumping 13 points, reading up 6 points. Those numbers represent real children, students who are learning more, reading more confidently, and thriving because their schools are stable and their educators are supported. I have these statistics, and I'm going to share them with you. Vacancy rates tell the same story. Richmond now has one of the lowest teacher vacancy rates in the region. We've seen the largest reduction in aid and paraprofessional vacancies in the entire state here in Richmond. That means more classrooms with consistent adults. That means more classrooms with consistent adults, more students getting attention they deserve, and more families able to trust that the schools are strong and that we're here for our students. Another statistics I want to share is tonight, I've been keeping my tally marks, we've had 28 speakers, 25 of them who've spoken to vote no on this proposed resolution changes. Collective bargaining works because it's built on respect, trust, and shared responsibility. I urge you to keep strengthening this partnership and the collaboration that has been proven so successful. I had the opportunity to speak to many of you this past week and even some of you today, and I appreciate that. And I actually appreciate that you've taken the time to listen to everybody who signed up, that's truly tremendous, thank you so much for doing that. I hope that you will listen and understand that the statistics show that you have members here that want to collaborate with you, and they want the time to do that. I also want to give one more shout-out because National School Lunch, Rosalinda Anderson, yes, there she is, Lucille Brown Middle School, I just want to give a shout-out to her. But I do appreciate you being here, I do appreciate you listening, and I do hope that you will vote no on the proposed changes on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gail Freeman-Hall, and I'm an, I am the Administrative Office Associate at Lewin-Holton Elementary, where I've been for the last 24 years. Two years ago, I was fortunate enough to be a part of the team of four, along with Sharon Gilbert, for the School Base Administrative Office Associates and Associates. We came to the table with RPS leadership for collective bargaining, bargaining for over 80 AOAs and OAs collectively. From August to March, we tirelessly met with the RPS leadership to negotiate fair wages and other conditions that we felt were important to all front-office staff. This was a result of being overlooked the previous school year, in which secretaries had not been given raises. The collective bargaining team met during schoolwork days for months, and even during our winter break, to have a seat at the table. We came to the school board meetings and city council meetings during the same time period to share our personal stories. This was no easy task. The negotiations were long and sometimes challenging, but we hung in there and we prevailed. School-based AOAs and OAs were currently, we are currently in year two of our third, or third-year negotiation agreement. Richmond is the first in the state of Virginia to have CBAs for teachers and for AOAs, something that I'm proud of and I take pleasure in. Please note, other localities are looking and have been watching us. To the new school board members, I don't know if you are aware of how challenging this process has been. It took a lot of fight and everything that we had to prevail. Most importantly, we fought for what we deserved and for what we bring to RPS, students, parents, and our community. Our parents and community and the past school board all helped in this fight. Having a seat at the table.
Thank you. Sorry, your time is up. Thank you all for your time. This now concludes public information session. We thank you all for your patience. We'll transition to board action items. First up, 5.01, received for action Head Start Report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Mr. Cameron. You have the report for the, for the Head Start component for the month of August. Our enrollment, sorry. So, in your report, you have the enrollment numbers for Head Start and Early Head Start for the month of August, which was combined with Pittsburgh, Head Start was 474, and Early Head Start was 37, but as of today, Head Start is 541, and Early Head Start is 49, which is only seven spots available in Early Head Start. We are cleaning the list in Child Plus to make sure that we have all the intakes, and we are counting also the 25 applications that are being accepted and are in process to complete the intakes. So, we are hopefully to be fully enrolled by the end of this month. So tomorrow, October 8th, we're going to have the planning call for the rent review from the Office of Head Start. Leadership has been getting together twice a week to be prepared for this call, but we also have been meeting twice a week to create continuing monitoring systems for all components, and also preparing for the further review, most likely will be in 2026. We conducted a health fair on 9/27, so some screenings were completed. We are planning to do another one to be able to provide physicals and dentals for our families. Policy Council retreat is scheduled for November 14 to the 16, and parent engagement conferences in December from 8 to 11, and for the, all components are receiving training in Child Plus, which is a plus. And now during the governor shutdown, we don't have access to our program specialists or the TEA team, but any further review are taking place. And in the links that you have, you have the program monthly report for August, you have the approved financial statements, you also have the policy council bylaws approved, policy council approved those on 9/5. 25. Do you guys have any questions?
Allies, any questions? Mr. Percival?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Heather Cruz. Thank you for this presentation. You pointed out for Head Start that we have 338 out of 513 funded slots. If I do my quick envelope math, 175 slots. Do we have an active plan fulfilling those by the end of this month?
Yeah, that was for August.
August.
Yeah, so today I went over the numbers, and we have 541.
Five.
Forty-one.
Five forty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. That includes a waiting list?
Uh, that, no, those are enrolled, fully enrolled. The Head Start call it "button seat," so those are, those are children that are attending. So we have a list of accepted, which is, are the ones that are, we are working with the intakes, those are around 30, but we also have a list of applications that we also are working on.
Okay, so just, so my math is correct, and we're doing apples to apples, so 513 is the number of seats in Richmond?
Yes.
So, 541 out of 513, when indicated, waiting list is 541 out of the fully, 600 and...
649, yes. Was maybe a 108, if my math is not. Yeah, and out of those 108, we have 25 to 30 accepted, and my staff is doing intake as we speak, but we also have a list of applications that we are working with the team of enrollment with DPI will look, and we hopefully, we are very hopeful that we will be fully enrolled by the end of the month.
I have a question as it relates to the bylaws. Some of the changes appear to go against the federal regulations in terms of those members that are aging out. Can you explain how and why we would, you guys would approve that if it doesn't fall in line with federal regulation?
So, the performance standards are very open and open to interpretation, and Head Start has something that they call "best practice." They recommend that the policy council at least the key positions like share and by share to be, to be occupied by current parents of children that are currently enrolled in the program. Head Start doesn't specify that former parents cannot be part of the policy council and can hold an office like community representative, ex-official, liaison, and things like that. As a director, my recommendation was to really read the standards and interpret the standards, and if we, we will decide, now we, the board and policy council, decide to move forward with former parents holding key positions like share and by share, to really specify what is a former parent. If it is a parent that was here two years ago, three years ago, or five years ago, because in the further review, we will be questioned why somebody that has not been in the program for three, four, or two years is holding a position that should be held by a current parent. So those are, my, my job was to send you the standards, to interpret the standards, and as a governing body, the policy council and the board, to work together to kind of go over the language of the bylaws, because if the reviewers come and interpret it as literally it says in the standards, they could say why you have former parents and keep positions when you have so many current parents.
Thank you. My concern is that obviously we have a lot at stake here with this grant, and we certainly don't want to fall out of compliance in another area that would cause us to lose more money or ultimately lose the grant. So, my recommendation would be for you guys to revisit that and to ensure that it aligns with federal regulations, so that we have everything ticked and tied. We want to make sure we get this right and ensure that we are following federal regulations, because as you know, it's very touch and go, and it's unfortunate that the government is shut down, and so we can't leverage resources and, and ask for guidance, and so we're hoping that that changes in the near future, but until that, such time, I do believe that it should be revisited so that we can remain aligned with federal regulations.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So at this time, we need a motion to approve the reports. I would just recommend that we reconsider the last one that we spoke of, which is the bylaws, so that they can revisit that at a later date.
Sure. Mr. Percival?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one more comment for the benefit of this board, because this board does serve in oversight capacity, and I've been frantically searching for it in this copy of the bylaws. I did notice in the bylaws that the liaison position from this board is no longer considered a member of the policy council, instead is invited to meetings and may be invited to special meetings.
So, that's the beauty of the bylaws. The bylaws, it should be completed with a collaboration with the board and the policy council, because they are basically the policies and procedures for both governing bodies. The liaison, according to the performance standards, can be either a parent or it can be a staff, so it doesn't specify that it has to be a parent. So, if it is a staff, they don't have a vote, but a parent liaison can participate during the policy council meetings.
Right, Madam Chair. So, I guess my point is that, to date, the liaison position from the RPS school board has been a full member of the policy council. According to these bylaws, that liaison position, which would come from this board, is no longer considered a member of that policy council.
That, that board and the policy council has to have a liaison, is either a person that is elected from the board as the liaison, or it has to be the chairperson that participates in every single board meeting and comes back and reports to the policy council. But the communication between board and policy council has to be through a liaison. That person can be a staff, that person can be a board member, and that person can be also the chairperson from the policy council, but that position has to stay.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, I just highlight that to this board as we consider these bylaws. I, I would like to see, personally, I would like to see the language strengthened a little bit, so that the liaison from this board is, can show up to any meeting, including special meetings.
My question to the board is, how would you recommend for us to approach this with the policy council? Would you like for any of the members of the board to be part of that conversation with the policy council members?
I mean, at the very least, it should be in alignment with federal regulation, as you just shared.
Yeah.
As a, a means of oversight, the bylaws can't go against what federal regulations say as it relates to a board member being able to be a part of meetings. So I think there's just some work to be done, and, you know, perhaps, we are always open to being a part of that conversation as we have in the past, but there are some other key elements, I won't bore the folks here tonight, but some things that I've, I'm highlighting and, and would like to share for you all to consider, I just want to make sure we are aligned with the federal standards, that is the most important thing.
Yeah.
Like, it's, some of the bylaws are fine, but it can't be a matter of opinion, it has to directly reflect the rules and regulations for this grant, because if not, we'll lose it.
Yeah, it has to be based on best practice, too.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate your feedback, if you give us the feedback, and then we can schedule a meeting and go over the bylaws.
Sounds good.
Madam Chair, just at this point, is Dr. Harris Muhammad weighed in at all?
I haven't gotten any indication from her, but she is listening.
Okay, just want to make sense, because it's hard to know.
That being said, can we have a motion to approve what's listed with the exception of the bylaws?
Madam Chair, I would move that we accept the report as presented, except for the bylaws.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Percival and seconded by Ms. Ricard, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Percival?
Yes.
Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Farouk?
Yes.
Mr. Hedjepeth?
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Jafar?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Thank you for all your work, you're doing an amazing job, the enrollment numbers are up, we're happy to hear that.
All right, at this time, we'll transition to 5.02, received for action collective bargaining Mr. Camerons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I welcome any and all feedback from the board.
Ms. Ricard? Mr. Farouk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent Camerons, one thing I would like to propose changing is, there was a change to put it as a five-year contract. I would like to see it go back to a three-year contract. A lot can happen in five years, educationally, economically, I think it makes more sense to return to our three-year cycle like we've been using.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, that certainly seems reasonable, happy to make that change.
Thank you. Mr. Farouk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yesterday, we celebrated some milestones where we reached 18-year highs in graduation rates, including for our economically disadvantaged kids. And that is because all of our staff and all of us work together, and so I know that I have gotten a lot of questions and concerns about the language, and so I think it's normal and appropriate to look for ways to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of our processes, but to use Stephen Covey's famous quote, "It's important to move at the speed of trust." And I worry that this process has eroded trust between our management and our staff. And when you, if you want more efficiency... And when you, if you want more efficiency and effectiveness, you really do have to build trust. Because I think in the long run, the eroded trust will cost us more. And so that is why I have to vote no today on this. And it's because, you know, we use the phrase, "RPS family." And as someone that has a big family, it is normal for family members to sometimes be in conflict, sometimes be in ugly conflict. And it's also normal to reset, and to heal, and to move forward. And so I look forward to us doing that together, because I know that all the staff, despite the heated rhetoric, I know all the staff, including our management, including our central office staff, including everyone at all of our schools, comes to work because of the kids, even on our tough days, when we're not showing up as our best selves. And so I am looking forward to us moving forward and trying to rebuild trust. And I would ask everyone to take a step back and think about that. And also to realize that it is normal for management to suggest things that employees might think are silly, and vice versa. It's normal. And I have worked for civil rights organizations that had similar tension. The most progressive people you can imagine having the exact same arguments we're having today. So just wanted to make some of those thoughts and feedbacks known to everyone, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And my position remains the same as I stated on last night. I would like to express my appreciation for the respectful manner in which the speakers addressed us this evening. It wasn't personal, it was professional, and I thank you for that. I thank you, Madam Chair, and my Board colleagues for the time allotment for this evening. I'm glad we discussed that in the beginning. I have a strong desire to be, I heard a strong desire to be at the table. We know all the sayings about, I can't think of the lady's name now. You don't have a table at, a chair at the table, then pull up a folding chair. Don't leave us out. As Maya Angelou stated, "People will never forget how you made them feel." And as an educator, as a person, as a woman, as a civil rights child of the era, and then some, I look forward to our working together. And when items are placed on the table with well intentions, but you get more with honey than you do with other stuff. So at the end of the day, I am very much concerned about the process. It's not about the money, not about the working conditions. It's about how you made me feel. So at the end of the day, I am voting against this resolution at this time, as it is written. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Harris Muhammad has her hand raised.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Am I sounding too loud? I turned up my volume a little bit. You can hear me just fine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. So thank you so much to all of the speakers who have come out. I'm so sorry I'm not there to be with you this evening. I'm attending professional development, as I shared with many of you. Just want to take a few moments to share my position, too, has not changed. And I just want to be clear on why it will not change. And it doesn't mean that I do not support the work of the superintendent or his Chief of Staff, Ms. Chang, as many may think or few may think, which is really not the concern for me to be focused on. The concern for me to be focused on are two things, decency and order. And I have heard, as I shared yesterday evening, from many of my dear longtime colleagues from the Richmond Education Association, and whom I trust, that I've known for a long time, that the process was not clear, they could not unpack such a thick document in a short period of time. And several of them made this point. And Ms. Bryant was very clear, and I just thank her for bringing some of the clarity. If they had known, when this discussion had started in July or August, they would have had the due time that they had. I had not even thought about that. But that is correct. And so even though we acknowledge some errors and some missteps on the way, I do not want any of our union partners to believe that the relationship has been, has been so far removed that it cannot be repaired. My heart doesn't believe that. I believe it can be repaired. And I'm going to continue to walk in that level of faith that it will be repaired. I am also eager to continue, as I volunteered before, to have a town hall with you. Because I, we, I really want to remain a partner. This process has concerned me. I do agree there are just some things that the School Division would not be able to cover from in the years to come. But I've always talked about the three Ps: process, procedure, and the policy. And I'm just not sure that our friends that we want to build a bridge with, together, be collaborative with, had the opportunity to make sure that they were clearly in the process and that they were collaborative. And, and I don't see what delaying it is going to do. I really don't. But if that's the will of the Board, that's the will of the Board. However, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Please refrain from clapping. We appreciate your understanding. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As someone who is a lifelong teacher, I've never been anything else. Devoted my life to my students. And now I'm at near the end of my career, and they actually are, some of them are like in my life, devoting it to me. Oh, did y'all hear me? Okay. Is it me? I'm not, okay. Yeah, I mean, certainly, I'm, I'm speaking low because this is hard. Yes, I'm a lifelong educator. No, I've never had collective bargaining. I started off teaching, I made $24,000 a year. And I raised two kids. I understand and I recognize that we need to progress, and that, you know, teachers have been perennially underpaid. I also, there's a part of me that, you know, we, we've gone, we've combed through that document multiple times. And some of the adjustments I see are common sense adjustments that prioritize and protect instructional time. And they also are fiscally responsible. I, I don't, I'm not going to say here how I'm going to vote. But what I will say, please be respectful. I will say that, you know, sometimes this is really felt, this is our first time doing this, we're the first district in the state to do it. It's not going to be perfect, and it has been a learn-as-you-go endeavor. What I will say, it's my hope that our journey, including our difficulties and hiccups, will make the road easier for other districts who are considering taking this incredible step. Because I've been contacted by some from other districts who are like, you know, there's no way we're going to do this. We can't. And I don't want us to be an example for why collective bargaining won't work. And believe me, they're not here, but there are quite a few people out there with that I wish this were easier. I have no other words.
Thank you. Mr. Hedges-Peth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief and not repeat too much of what I said yesterday, other than I continue to regret the timeline. That I do appreciate that my Board colleagues and I, we, we did take a lot of feedback, and the superintendent did attempt to, to satisfy those concerns. So we did cobble together something that would, that we would hope to work for everyone. But I, again, I, I'm, I'm still concerned about the, the process. It's been a number of years since some of our partners have engaged in collective bargaining. We just are fresh off of that practice recently. I think it would be wise for us to go through that, that process together, as in the existing document, one more time, and in tandem, revise or suggest revisions as partners. So we model the collaborative spirit that we, we hope we receive, and that, we hope that our, our employees and our scholars also practice. So again, I, I would, would also vote no, because I think that it's most important that we build relationships, not tarnish those.
Mr. Jafar?
Thanks, Madam Chair, and my colleagues. Absolute difficult, difficulty in, in getting to this juncture. RPS brought this into existence. So I, I have been concerned about the kinds of attacks that the Board has come under. But basically, doing what its job is, it's not just RPS's job, this Board here, superintendent's job to create the CVA and the opportunity for it. It is also a reciprocal response to come behind it and to refine the process. We'd be derelict if we didn't do that. As I sit here and I, and I listen to my colleagues, and we always, we listen to one another, try to come to a conclusion after listening to one another. As I revisit the, the document that I see before me, I see, it's a two-pronged situation that we're dealing with. First of all, we're dealing with whether or not the refinements work. When the superintendent went back and he put the information, basically put it back in, and he re-divided some of it into disputes, I was, I'm on board with that. I'm on board with the refinements. I've heard it said here this evening that, and I, and I want to make sure I get this quote correct, "Everyone must assume good intentions." Much of what I've heard assumes the opposite, assumes that we're out to subterfuge or, or to undermine the workers and those who actually told the land in the schools. And I've not found that to be the case. I've not found that to be the case. Now, as I've said, it is a two-pronged situation that we're dealing with. First of all, the refinements, and I recognize that it's our job to refine this. But I also recognize, and I have to respond to my constituents, some of whom I heard to before even coming down here today, and also my conscience, as I look at the document here, there are still a number of, of blue lines and red lines, and that basically says it's an unfinished document. And so I have a problem with rushing.
Thirty seconds.
Simply just pass it for the sake of passing it. I want to get as many of our partners on board as possible. And so because of those factors, I'm called to, to vote no this evening. I'm called to vote no, because we must allow ample opportunities for everybody to come to the table. And that's what I stand in need of this evening.
Mr. Percival?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regardless of what happens here, I'd like to address some of the false dichotomies that I've heard. Some of the things that I heard were, if, if you're for this, you're against teachers. And that is patently not true. I, I can speak, my colleagues, on this front. Everybody on this dais is for the teachers of RPS. The only thing that I heard is that we haven't listened to teachers. I got an, I got one email from a teacher, that's all it took, and I was physically there for a meeting, REA, to discuss this. Another narrative that I heard is that there hasn't been a seat at the table, there hasn't been a voice, there hasn't been input. The document that Mr. Jafar just referred to empirically begs to differ with that. There are strike-throughs of strike-throughs. There are multiple colored fonts. It's not a document, it's not a document that was put together and had no additional input to this document. This document is a collaboration. And argue about the length of time, but it is a collaboration. So repeating something over and over doesn't make it more or less true. So what I will say is that teachers are the most important resource in this school system, and always will be. And regardless of what happens tonight, whether you still, like one of us or all of us, it will still be fighting for you every single day. One last point that I will point out, that points to the importance of these types of changes, was something that was brought up tonight about negotiating about where meetings are held. But that tells me is that this process does need to be changed. Because we should not be negotiating where meetings are held in a collective bargaining environment. Send me an email, I will go to bat for you, have the meetings held wherever you want. Let's not put those into a collective bargaining, where we're spending multiple people's time trying to figure that out. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Please refrain, if you can. I know it's very tempting, we're all passionate about this topic, but it helps us to just streamline the process without having to stop for disruptions. Um, would you like that? Does Ms. Rizzi have any time before I share my thoughts?
Thirty-three seconds.
Yeah, you know, I just did want to add, because I hadn't heard it, you know, I, I referred to this as a negotiation last night. And I was, you know, corrected by the Chair, this, this does not have to be a negotiation. Creating the agreement actually is the purview of the School Board. And the fact that we are entering this as though it's a negotiation, I think, is, you know, reflective of the fact that we care about where you are in this.
Thank you. My thoughts and sentiments are this. As many of you know, I'm smoking with many of you, and emailed back and forth, had some And the value of the union is one that's extremely important. Support and advocacy for our teachers is extremely important. You are a major part of the success of our students. And so this night comes as, you know, I don't think anyone walked into it this evening with a happy heart, right? Because these are hard decisions that we have to make. As I shared yesterday, the fiduciary responsibility of the Board is one to oversee all things. I had a conversation with the REA representative who shared with me, you know, there are some things that you could possibly consider that aren't related to budgetary constraints. And I agree. So we went back and gave that feedback to the administration. Changes were made because of that. We had some more conversations. We talked with one another, we talked with our constituents. We went back to the administration, gave some more feedback. So the idea that folks are not being heard is farthest from the truth. The decisions that we've made had you in mind, also the opportunity to share. But I agree that there could have been more time to consider the resolution, absolutely. Hindsight, I think that we all agree that we probably would have addressed that a little bit sooner. Because of that, my request this evening is that we allow time, defer this, so that we can allow for more conversations with our constituents, those in the community, teachers in the unions, to understand and get more feedback surrounding the resolution, and see if there's any more consideration to any changes that might take place. One minute. Thoughts, colleagues? Ms. Ricard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering if it would be possible to make a motion to instead defer the decision until November? until November, to give time for conversation.
Is there a second?
Dr. Harris Mohammed has a thought.
I'm sorry? Ms. Richardson?
Dr. Harris Mohammed has a thought she'd like to share.
Okay, once we close this piece out, then we'll open it up the floor. So we had the motion and then the second was from Mr. Jafari, and now we'll open the floor for debate. So we have Dr. Harris Mohammed, is there someone else who'd like to share? Ms. Burke? Mr. Hedgepath? Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you so much. So I just want to make sure I'm clear, so I also want to share with you all, if you can help me out by leaning into your mic, because I can't hear many of you, so I, I just, I appreciate that, I really do. I'm, I'm struggling to try to find out what you're saying or hear what you're saying. Okay, so let me be clear. I just want to be clear. I really need to be clear. We went through what we went through yesterday, which was a robust conversation, which is part of the governance.
I'm sorry.
It's time, I thought this was a new set of, I thought, I'm confused, I'm really confused. I thought a motion was on the floor, it was seconded, so we're open for discussion? Did someone say time?
Unless someone disagrees because of the type of conversation, I will be open to reset in time for folks to speak again since a no motion is made. Thoughts about that, any concerns? No concerns?
Well.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, go ahead and continue, we're going to reset the clock for you.
I just want to be clear that really yesterday, we, we could have taken a, an inquiry of where we were, and we really could have put out the announcement today that we would defer. So I was just under the assumption that we were going to go through the process of what the superintendent asked of the board. I was under the, I was told by the superintendent that the majority of the board was going to vote in favor for it to, for the document to move forward, which I, I was fine with because that's a part of governance. I just feel like we dropped the ball on communicating again when we could have told the people that we are going to defer this until November because of some concerns, also recognizing that pieces of the information in a document may or may not change. I just, I just really feel like we have allowed hundreds of people, thousands of individuals to go through this for nothing when, and I appreciate the motion to defer, I, I really do, but we really could have dealt with this yesterday. We could have publicly said that we would defer based off the information that we shared with each other, but that's just me. I, I, again, I do appreciate the motion to defer, but we're working backwards. And so, and that may not make sense right now, but we are, because we had an opportunity 24 hours ago to do that. So here we are. I support the, the deferment, I do, but I think it also should come with the understanding that information in the collective bargaining documentation may not change based off of, because here's the thing, if we vote to defer, but we don't vote to change the information in it, what was the point of deferring? I'm just saying, we have to think about that. Now, I want to defer, but don't let it be the same because you're going to be back in the same place. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. I would also remind, I would also remind you that this was our first opportunity to hear from the public, and if we were to have deferred it yesterday, we would not have had the opportunity to hear the heart of the public. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the motion to defer, however, I am concerned about November. Is, so my question is, is there a timeframe where this needs to be done? My second thought is that I agree with your statement you just stated, Madam Chair, I needed to see the people, I needed to hear the people, all right? We received hundreds and hundreds of emails, lots of phone calls, lots of text messages, but it's a difference when you're face to face. And I think that goes back to the original position on how this was done. Yes, meetings were held with, with the president, yes, meetings were held with the chair and the administration, but at the end of the day, the persons who are going to be affected by the decisions of which we make, they're just asking for a collective effort. So I'm, I wasn't in favor of deferring based upon our conversation because it's a difference when you hear from folk. So my question is, number one, is there a timeline, timeframe with this? Number two, being realistic, November with everything else coming up, are we going to be able to revisit the whole process? And there will be changes made to what was done at some point, something is going to have to change. So my question is, is there a timeframe or has that not been done yet? I'm in favor of deferring, but not of response by November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hedgepath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the comments of, that my colleagues have made thus far. I am concerned about a delay. I, I know that we should be starting our negotiations in earnest that with budget season on the, on, we're on the brink of that, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about it. That was, I think, what, what necessitated the expedition, expedient process that we have been experiencing at this moment. So I, I'm tending to, I'd like to hear from my colleagues about it as well, but I am tending to say no to defer. And again, my, my preference would be that we continue the course with the, continue with the document that we used last time and in tandem with our union partners, together reflect and revise the process for the subsequent negotiation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have Mr. Jafari and then Ms. Rizzi.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I think we're doing the right thing, we're doing the right thing here by deferring. We need not be expedient, it's better that we try to get it right and that we get in as many voices as we can and get them to the table. We'll take care of November when November gets here, and we will get collective bargaining agreement. It may not be agreed upon by all parties. When I came in here, which is a reference to my colleague who stated perhaps that we could have gone with what we decided or the way we were leaning last night, that wouldn't have worked for me because I had to come in here and I had to hear you. I had to hear and be swayed. I, I could have been leaning a certain direction, but you don't make a decision based on how you lean. You make the decision based on what the constituents say and what the people say, and, and you listen to their concerns, at least that's the way I do it. I'm only one ninth of a vote, and everybody else up here can speak for themselves, but I know my colleagues and I know that they have your best interests at heart. They are not here to do anything untoward to any of you, and I can, I can say that to you with honesty and with a clear conscience. But I can tell you, I had not made my mind up when I came in here. To lean one way or another is, is not good enough. We've got to do what we need to do to refine the language and get it right because that burden still rests with us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would recommend, you know, as one half of the, well, I was co-chair of the committee that, I was sure this agreement in the first place, I can see that one area of oversight we have is that we did not codify this process. And so this process needs to be written into the collective bargaining agreement so that we know from now on how this will work. We will, you know, hopefully, you know, the, the administration in conjunction with our unions will sit down and work out a process so that this does not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. So questions about what's next? My suggestion, as I shared, I believe it is important to defer. One of the number one themes of this evening is it was rushed, we didn't have time, and hearing that, we can't ignore that. With that being said, I do believe that we do have, time is definitely ticking, and so pushing this out, obviously with granting that request will push out negotiations. And so I want to be very transparent with that, that will give folks the opportunity, you know, I would lean on the administration to really continue conversations with, with union representatives, give feedback. I'm sure all, I know my door is open, the door of the board, my fellow colleagues is open to hear, as we've done. This document was one thing, and it has been stripped down since the very beginning based upon feedback considerations, not just from you all, but from us internally as well, based upon our experience and foresight. And so, and I think in good faith, that's the, that's the best approach. That being said, one of the things that I did share and ask to be a part of this resolution is that it, share in the resolution that this is going to be a part of the process moving forward, there should be a timeframe for folks to be prepared for that, to know that it's coming so that they don't feel blindsided, and the administration has agreed to that. But I think that we can go back and look again. That doesn't necessarily mean, I, I don't foresee us walking out of this where both sides feel like they've been completely vindicated, but if we could try to meet somewhere in the middle, I think that's where we will win. And so that would be my charge to Superintendent Cameron and the administration, and I think we revisit this in the November board meeting. If there are no concerns or feedback, Mr. Hedgepath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I still would like to understand if, what the conditions will be for that delay. I would like some guarantees that there are, there will be multiple meetings scheduled with our leaders of our, our unions because if time is what we're, we're providing here, we need to also provide the space for that to happen. And that, again, is, is, has been a critique of this process. So I, I, i- if everyone else on, is on board with moving this to the November meeting, again, I, I need some guarantees that, that there's going to be dedicated time, not just one time, but multiple times that, that administration is going to sit down with our union partners to flush through that, that process more thoroughly.
Mr. Cameron.
Absolutely. I'm happy to meet with all of our partners as many times as they would like.
Dr. Harris Mohammed has a comment.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ricard.
Thank you. Mr. Hedgepath, I appreciate that. I think it would be good to leave with an understanding of is there a committee, is there just meetings? What we are looking at so that the time is productive for all parties and that all parties feel heard. I think that's, that is very important.
Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reflecting upon what Mr. Hedgepath has stated, as I stated earlier, to be realistic, if I'm seeing this picture correctly, colleagues, to have less than three weeks to come together with a plan of action, not just to run through to get it done. And I want us to think also back to when we went through, well, okay, Ms. Rizzi, just collective bargaining, Dr. Harris Mohammed is still there. It took months, it took months, and it's going to take a while to get this straight. We know the budget is coming up, we know that. That's one of the reasons why we're going through this process, so that we can better be able to move forward together because there will be some things that need to be addressed. So just being realistic, and I keep saying to you all, thinking about the time that put, that's put into this effort, Bosman, mediator, whomever. We need, we need help. I just got started, how do I get 30 minutes already? The second speaker, okay. Okay, so my question is, I'm just, I'm thinking that to ask the administration to come in here in November with everything done is not going to happen if we're going to do it right. We're going to do it right, allow the administration the time, look at all the hours they've already spent, time.
Thank you.
And like I said.
I'm sorry, your time is up, Ms. Burke. We know, we value you very much. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I heard a couple of things that will, a part of the review explain the process of how we're going to move forward, Mr. Cameron, very quickly? Is that going to be in an addition?
I'm sorry, what was the question, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Will the process that is going to be reviewed, excuse me, the document that, that's going to be reviewed, will that have included now the process moving forward for collective bargaining?
Oh, you mean in the resolution articulating how
Correct.
future changes? Yes, we could happily put that in as well, yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thirty seconds.
I'm out of time, I'm sorry.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, so, and also can, I, I just want to make the statement again, I am open to holding a town hall with our part, with our union partners, they can reach out to me, and we can discuss some date and times, I really appreciate it, thank you. Thank you to the, to my colleagues for having a robust conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Farooq.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a suggestion and I would like to hear from Mr. Cameron and our management about this. Following up on what Ms. Burke and Mr. Hedgepath said, this is difficult work, and in addition to actually talking and negotiating some of the language changes, like Ms. Rizzi said, we also want to maybe build in some language that lays out a clear process going forward. So my suggestion is that we actually convene a formal committee that would include reps from each of the unions and Mr. Cameron and whoever his designees are, and task them with negotiating these changes while the rest of this year we go through our normal CBA process as it exists, to come up with changes to the CBA that would take effect the following year. And I think that would give us time to do this properly, but also in a way where people feel heard, and I would like to hear any of Mr. Cameron's thoughts.
I am happy to do whatever the board would like me to do, truly. I do think, given the work that has already happened, that actually a lot of good compromise has occurred, and I certainly believe over the next four weeks that there is time for us to have further conversations and produce a document that addresses what I heard from many folks on the dais, which was that you wanted more time. This is more time to truly consider, and I'm happy to meet with each of the union partners every week for the next four weeks to take their feedback, to share that with the board, to get your input. Again, I, I think that is a reasonable amount of time to try to close the gap on this and bring it back to the board, but I serve at the pleasure of the board and will do as directed.
Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, however we go about doing this, I mean, I feel better that we're having this conversation, that you're here in front of us. I think we want to think about the fact that we want to get this as right as we can because, believe me, there are some people in this state chomping at the bit. because, believe me, there are some people in this state chomping at the bit to shut it all down. And to say, hey, it didn't work. I've heard from those people. And so we want to work together as much as we can to get this right, so that this can continue. And I mean, I think, you know, I don't know how many of you know that that's really a serious potential outcome. But it is. Thank you.
Thank you. All hearts and minds clear. It's time to vote. The vote on the table was a deferment?
Yes. Who was the second on that?
It was Mr. Jafari.
And the motion was to defer the vote to the November meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Are we ready for the vote now?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Burke.
So the vote is to defer, we're going to vote again in, we're going to vote again in November? What did she just say? That's what I?
That's the motion on the floor is that we defer the vote until November, because the consensus has been that colleagues and also constituents have shared the concern of that it feels rushed. And they've asked for more time to give more feedback, to address key areas of the recommendations, so that we can make adjustments accordingly. So the document that we see today, nine times out of 10, will not be the document we see in November, because of the feedback and work that the administration will do with the unions.
I'm not going to vote in favor of that. And the reason being is, number one, just as we are here tonight, we were last night and here tonight. So when we come back in November, we don't have a chance to study or see anything in between. So I can't vote tonight in favor of that. And I know the majority rules. But I'm voting no on that, because that means when we come back here the Monday in November, and it's put before us, we don't hear from the community, the persons that it's going to affect until Tuesday, and then we vote on Tuesday. No. I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
My mic off this time. Mr. Percival?
Yes.
Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Mr. Farouk?
No.
Mr. Hedgepath?
No.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
I'm sorry, what is the motion again? I can't, I can't hear.
To defer the vote to November, to allow for the union and the administration to work out and iron out concerns relating to the document and make revisions.
I had, I had an amendment to that. I just can't hear y'all. I'm sorry. I'm really working hard to try to hear.
We can't do an amendment in the middle of a motion on the floor, though. So.
So, yes.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Dr. Harris Mohammed, I cut you off. I'm sorry. Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Mr. Jafari?
Yes.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving right along to 5.03, receive an update on RPS Education Foundation.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm out of order. And I apologize, but what was the end result?
I'm sorry?
What was the end result?
The motion passed to defer. That's all we voted on, was defer.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Please, let's do this in decency and order. We appreciate it. Okay, that's not going to work. Let's not be disrespectful. Good evening.
Good evening. All right, y'all. Good evening. I'm going to be brief tonight. Happy to answer some questions. But really just want to give you all a snapshot of what I think is some exciting momentum from the Richmond Ed Fund and preview what's ahead. In short, I want just to say that I think Richmond is at an inflection point. And it's a really great opportunity for Richmond Public Schools. So a couple of things. Fiscal year '25 in review. About a year ago, I stood here and shared that we have rebranded and that we were making a couple of changes. And then also in last school year, I made a stretch pledge that we would raise $5 million. I'll be very honest with y'all. There were a lot of folks who told me I lost my mind when I came up here and said that. And even one of our vendors said, "It's impossible for organizations to grow that quickly." I, I'm here today to share that in fiscal year '25, we received $7,492,000. So where I'm from, we would claim the $7.5 million. But that works out to be about $340 per student. I also told you all that in the J-Larck report, it said that RPS is underfunded by about $2,000 per student, which is essentially an additional $40 million. And my goal is that we will meet the state halfway on that, state to city halfway. And so my goal is that we're going to become a $20 million organization. Just quick rehash, we talked a lot about, we changed the way we talked about money. We don't ask for donations. We don't ask for gifts. We don't ask for contributions. We talk about investments. A lot of times those investments, we, I talk about the social return on investment. And honestly, great schools are the infrastructure for great public safety, housing stability, the economy, and public health. And so something else that has come up over the past few months, some folks ask, why do we charge an administrative fee and what is that administrative fee? So our administrative fees are between 3% and 10%, actually between 0% and 10%. The overwhelming majority of our funds, we charge a 0% administrative fee. The things that we use for administrative fees is actually a really good deal for organizations that we serve as a fiscal sponsor for. They don't have to worry about being audited. They don't have to pay an outside accountant. And they don't have to worry about the fundraising system. So last month, for example, we, we've been trying to help support the Chembrazo Playground. And they raised $118,000. We also have another $25,000 pledge for them. And there are 2,647 supporters of that campaign right now. That meant that we had to increase our fundraising infrastructure at the organization to support that. I want to talk a little bit more in the future with you all about safe play spaces throughout the city, because Chembrazo, Ms. Burke started this conversation over a year ago with me, but there are a number of other elementary schools in this city that there are needs for safe play spaces. Have you all heard about RVA Rising? What do you know about RVA Rising so far? Do y'all just think it's a collection of people who are just talking about doing something? I think that's kind of consensus overall. But I don't think that's what it actually is. And I think it's really an opportunity. It's a collective impact effort that's regional, but it's really focusing on economic mobility for all. And I'm really excited that, to work with you all, because this is something that you all have been talking about for several years, ever since I started following the Richmond Public School Board. But I was really excited last night when the graduation data was presented. And a couple of you all said, "Well, this is great, but what does this really mean long term?" Truthfully, no K-12 school district in America is doing a great job of researching outcomes for their kids. We are aggressively pursuing investments all over the country to do that, to build the infrastructure, to ensure that we can not only tell the story, but we really know what's happening with our students. I think the most exciting thing about RVA Rising is that in Richmond, we have this culture of trying to do everything on our own. And we have an opportunity to really work cross-sector in collaboration to serve the needs of our students. And something else I think that's really, really exciting is that local folks are now talking about impact investing. And I think there are some opportunities for us to talk more about that. But impact investing is like philanthropy, but folks not only talk about a social return, sometimes they get a modest financial return as well. Something that we've been talking a lot about is, and I'll be the first to tell you, I'm really excited about the growth in graduation rates specifically, but literacy and everything else that we're seeing. But what are we graduating our kids into? And I told the story recently, where I'm from in Farmville, we always thought the graduation as the end. And it took me a long time to really realize that commencement meant it's actually the beginning. And so what are we graduating our kids into? In Virginia, the minimum wage right now is $12.41 an hour. The living wage in Richmond is $23.45 an hour. So we've made a commitment that we are only working with partners that total compensation is at least $23 an hour. And we are aggressively pursuing investments. I'm cautiously optimistic, but we're working on everything from paid externships for teachers to paid work-based learning opportunities for students. And I'm literally on the phone around the clock. Yeah, I mentioned earlier, building infrastructure. Someone said to me one day, "When do you, when are you all ever off work?" And I said, "We're never off work." New Year's Eve last year, a financial planner called and said, "Hey, I have, I have a client who wants to donate some stock. Can you, can you take it today?" I was like, "Absolutely." But these are the types of things that our staff is doing, because our students deserve it, our students need it. And I think this is how we're really going to move the needle forward in Richmond. As far as giving it for, I think most of you all know, we launched this campaign on August 4th to support literacy and RPS. Our goals were $50,000, 10,000 books, and signing up as many reading butters as possible. Proud to say that we raised $62,000. We collected over 1,000 books. So it's not too late to donate books. And we will continue to explore how we can build upon this momentum this year and in future years. I do have some asks this evening. We have two board members, potential board members, that our board has already approved. First is Ms. Ursula Friedman, who has an extensive education nonprofit experience. She pretty knew the Richmond, but a lot of experience with fundraising grants and external affairs nationally. And the second is Ms. Ariel Nathan, who's a senior manager of philanthropy at Constellation in Maryland. She moved to Richmond over the last couple of years as well. And our board unanimously approved both of these ladies to join. And so for new members and people at home, this is part of our process. It's almost like Supreme Court. You all have to confirm these members. And my two asks tonight are, I humbly ask you all to confirm these two new board members. And I'd really love some direction or naming opportunities. We talked about it briefly before. I know that you all probably still aren't ready to make a decision, but I'd really like some direction so we can hit the ground running on that as well. Happy to answer any questions you all may have. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Show me the money. Well done, well done. You can manage my finances any time. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you so much for your hard work and what you're doing. I'm glad that you shared, gave us a good update, per se. My question is, and I'm also glad that you clarified that your fee, administrative fee, is usually from 0% to 100%, excuse me, to 10%, I'm sorry. Because I've been hearing 16%. I don't know where that came about. Do you know anything about the 16%?
There is a fee on the platform when people donate at times. So let's say you donate $10 to Chembrazo Playground. When you go to press donate, you have a choice of covering the fee and not, the processing fee for the platform. If you say no, they take that out of it. So we may only receive $9.40 instead of $10.
Now, you know, I'm surprised about that, because I've donated and I don't remember seeing 16%.
No, it's not 16%. I don't know where 16% came from.
That's, and I'll talk to you later about that. I have two questions. And I guess that's probably an opportunity to look at your budget, per se. What's the donation line? At one time, you had in place an opportunity to support families that were experiencing trying times through death or whatever else. What's, do we still have that line item in place?
Yes, we, we've rebranded that fund. It was Honoring the Memory.
Yes.
It's now the Crisis Response Fund, because we wanted to support things outside of just bereavement. And like, that fund was activated when we had the water crisis in January to pay for meals for families.
So my last question is, thinking in terms of the upcoming holiday of Thanksgiving, which is at the end of the month, where most people don't have, I know we go to, a group of us going to the neighborhoods, because it's the end of the month, people don't have what's what. So in the event that we have some families in our districts, do we, and how is that handled, per se, in terms of, can you help with that, per se, number one? And if so, what's the procedure? Or you want to get back with me?
No, I'm happy to publicly talk about this. We've tried to move away from some of that type of support. But we know I have plenty of partners, and I think we can figure it out, even if it's not us. Yes, we have plenty of partners that, and I'm happy to figure it out. And I think Dr. Greenville can help as well.
Thank you. Because we've been, some parents have come to us already to ask for homes. Richmond Public Schools does everything. To ask for homes, to ask for a place to live their heads, they've gotten jobs, they don't have a place to stay. We have, we have a lot of that, unfortunately, because of being mindful of the times as well, even federal workers.
Yes.
That's, that's happening. And I'm not saying you have to do it. We have to do everything. But my question is, if there are, if there's a line item or if there is support to address that? And if so, where do we go if you know that?
Yes. And I'm happy to try to compile some resources as well. Yes, I think that you all go above and beyond trying to serve our students and their families holistically, and that's noble. And I want to be as helpful as we possibly can.
I have Mr. Hedgepath and Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I really appreciate all of the work that you're doing. It's really very, very important. I am excited about the two new candidates. Thank you for bringing those to us. I also am excited about the possibility of some naming opportunities. I saw, I'm curious about maybe some sort of rubric. I, I saw, I'm curious about maybe some sort of rubric that we'll use for determining the companies. But I saw that you are already talking about working with folks that, and businesses that pay their employees a living wage. I think that's really important. I think that those that have a social justice commitment, those that are committed to DEI are of particular interest. I, to me personally, and I don't want to speak to my board colleagues, but maybe also minority-owned businesses. So things that you're probably already are on your list, but I just am curious about that.
Yes, I don't anticipate that I will ever have the authority to actually make that decision unilaterally. What I anticipate is you all will say, hey, there's an appetite to name, to name the football field at X school. And then I can begin to communicate that. And then I come and say, hey, I have, have these three organizations or these three families. And you all then will evaluate it. And I don't anticipate that you all will. I did talk to Dr. Harris Mohammed about this a few months ago, and I think it's something that the Policy Committee will definitely have to establish a policy on. But there are some folks right now who are interested in different opportunities. So for example, there's a family that wants to support a podcast studio at Richmond High School for the Arts. I, I think it, that could be a great opportunity for us. And this could be a way that we can begin to think about how we be furnished some schools. And I think eventually that could be a way for us to think about some capital projects in schools as well.
Ms. Rizzi and then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So yeah, I really appreciate that you are opening this discussion to talk about impact beyond high school. You know, where I work, you know, everyone is talking about work-based learning, vertically-integrated projects that also, you know, prepare students for real work outside of the educational environment. Also highlighting the fact that, you know, minimum wage is not a living wage in this state. And so anything that we can do to support innovation in that area, I think it's going to be a good investment. Because that is, that is the way that things are going right now. And I think we do our kids a disservice if we don't set them up well for life after high school. So I'm very excited that we're having this conversation.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you. I too support the two members that are being brought forward this evening. Thank you so much for that, Mr. Cooper. In addition to that, when will you all begin opening the window to share any scholarship information for the class of 2026? If you plan on providing opportunities? I know there was some discussion in the past about revamping that process. But if you have some information to share, really would like to hear that. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for that. Two things I want to, I want to share about scholarships. Last year, when we made the decision to end our scholarships, or to sunset our scholarship program, that was never to be said that scholarships had to stop. We began communicating with the donors. If, so we don't have an endowment, right? So everything we raise, we raise. And so some donors had given us dollars. And I use the word donor intentionally there. Some donors had given us dollars for scholarships. And so we communicated with them, and some of them repurposed them. There were, there are some situations that aren't as clean. And we are working through some of those scenarios. I, what I will say about scholarships, I just, I didn't believe that was the best use. We didn't have the capacity to do that in the way that I thought was really meaningful. And I think it made sense for us to have scholarships when the future centers were with us. But at that point, as of, once future centers came to RPS, the only time people ever heard, the only, only time we ever worked with those students were during the application process. So there will be, I think there will be some things that we can do with. Specifically, there's one large scholarship fund that we still have, that we have responsibility to govern and to steward those dollars. And the others, we are working with the donors to, to repurpose individually.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Cooper?
How many?
Forty seconds.
Thank you. How many openings do you still have on your board? Any more empty seats? I know you have a number in mind.
Yes, ma'am. We, we currently have seven openings. We increased our number of board seats in our new bylaws, yes.
So how many people do you have currently on the board?
We currently have 14 voting members.
So you need seven more.
Well, I hope we only going to need five after.
Oh, because of this? Oh, of course, of course, of course. And the reason I'm asking also, would like to see a balance there. Would like to see a balance. Backgrounds as well as racial and experience. Thank you. And it seems like there's more women than men. Is that correct?
Is that a bad thing?
No, that's a real good thing. I'm just, I'm just checking. I'm just checking. I just have a couple of people in mind, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to have a conversation with any and everyone about joining our board.
Yes, I'm happy to make the motion. I also just wanted to say, I love that we're talking about pursuing naming rights. And I think it is a great thing for the Policy Council to put into policy. And so I would just love to see that process start. I think these times call for creative fundraising. And if we can do it right, this is a avenue. So with that, I make a motion to confirm the two new board members as stated, as identified in this document, the Richmond Ed Fund.
It's been motioned by Ms. Ricard, seconded by Ms. Burke to approve the new members of the Ed Fund that appear in this document. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Percival.
Yes.
Ms. Ricard.
Yes.
Mr. Farouk.
Yes.
Mr. Hedgesmith.
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi. Dr. Harris Mohammed. Dr. Harris Mohammed, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry, repeat that.
There's a motion on the table, Dr. Harris Mohammed, to accept the two new members to the Ed Fund Board.
Mr. Percival, can you, can you lean into the microphone just a little bit?
Absolutely, I'm about eating it, but I'll try what I can. There was a motion on the floor to adopt two new board members to the Ed Fund Board.
Yes. Yep. So you needed a second?
No, just a vote, ma'am.
Oh, it's my time to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
You're welcome.
Yes. Mr. Jabari. Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Dr. Greenbell, before we move forward, was it something you wanted to add to the conversation?
I just, I just wanted to say that if any board members know of folks who are struggling throughout the holidays, please send them my way and I will see what we can do through our Center for Families in Transition. We do a lot of support over Thanksgiving, Christmas, and we're delighted to help people find resources. I'd also like to add, I know that every year Delegate Mike Jones does a turkey giveaway. He will be hosting that again at River City. As soon as I get that date, I will let everyone know. And I was also thinking about perhaps that might be a good opportunity for us to have a table since it's going to be at one of our schools in RPS. So we can have more conversations on that. All right, up next, our consent agenda. Any concerns before we vote? Ms. Ricard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I saw that we are receiving for approval the calendar. I just was wondering if it was possible to get an update on if there were any survey results and how our community was feeling about the calendar. Sorry.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I will try to keep this brief. We did have a survey that we opened for a three-week window via RPS Direct. We received 300 responses. And if you take note of slides four and five, I showed you how your districts participated, as well as for RPS 200. It is not broken down by district because there are only four RPS 200 schools. And so that would let you know how our RPS 200 voters participate, how they identified, as well as our traditional calendar district response. As you can see, we had an overwhelming response from District Three, followed by District One and Four. But we did have representation from all districts, as well as individuals who identified as just members of the Central Office. Just really quickly, there were some preferred changes that were named. We got a lot of information about a kindergarten staggered start day. I'm just requesting a little bit more time on that to get some conversation with our, engage our elementary school leaders about that and open it beyond that one survey. We did get a lot of feedback about starting in August and May. However, we are bound by the quote-unquote Kingdom Dominion Rule. Our constituents really want us to start in August and end in May, but unfortunately, we're not able to do that. There are some suggestions of moving the Wellness Day to the long stretch between a return from spring break and Memorial Day in May. There is one date for that Wellness Day to be moved, which is February 16th. However, they also, it was more so that they wanted an additional Wellness Day. Inclusion of the day off to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. Unfortunately, that recognition is not included in school board policy. Happy to take that to the Policy Committee if the, if it is the will of the board. There's been requests for five, five-day breaks for Thanksgiving holiday. Actually, the board only prescribes two days. We gave an additional day to make three. So right now, per policy, it's just the Thursday and the Friday. We also gave the Wednesday already. And then there was a lot of feedback about there's some mistakes on the calendar, which I really appreciated. Not very many, but the feedback really allowed me to make sure that it was very clear and consistent across calendars. As I mentioned before, we will be doing two calendars, one that will be staff-facing as well as one that is public-facing because a lot of folks find our calendar to be incredibly confusing. So we received that feedback. So we're going to make that a lot smoother than the one that you see. And there were a bunch of celebrations, which I gave some quotes about. And I just offered some notable discrepancies from surrounding counties and left the, the remaining FAQ. Happy to take questions.
Ms. Ricard.
Thank you. So I think if I'm reading the presentation right, the idea is that you'll get feedback about the staggered kindergarten day. And so it may still come, but we do want to consult our leaders.
We do need, I need more time to consult our, our leaders and how that would look. It looks very different across our neighboring divisions. And so we need to make some decisions on, A, if we are going to do it, and then B, how we are going to do it. Because Chesterfield, for instance, does it very differently than Henrico, which I just need a little bit more time.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. One more follow-up. I did have a constituent reach out that the blue and the purple look very, at least on this year's calendar, when you print it.
It's going to look so different. We just didn't, we didn't have time. Our amazing brand and strategy, and thank you, our digital strategy coordinator, just returned from maternity leave. So we're very excited to dive in. It's going to be very clear, very concise colors. We won't need as many, I promise. I promise that you will love it. Thanks, Mr. Farouk. Any other thoughts before we? Is there a motion on the floor?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I sent Ms. Richardson a text that I had a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
No, I sent it to Ms., to Mrs. Richardson.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Greenbell. So a question for the Superintendent and Dr. Greenbell. Are all of the other religious holidays written in our policy? And if so, what policy number is that?
Yes, they are all included in School Board Policy 7-7.6. So I, I use that.
Okay.
I use that as my guide for determining which holidays we include into the calendar.
Okay, thank you. And I have a follow-up question. The feedback in terms of having a staggered kindergarten day, can we make sure we are obtaining research, not just from the building leaders, but also research about a staggered start for that age group? Because there is some research out there. So I just want the school board to have the information. I know that there may be some individuals that desire to have a staggered start for kindergarten, kindergarteners. But also research speaks to the importance of our youngsters, particularly in that age, starting a routine and having a routine as early as possible. And sometimes stagger starts may not be a part, part of that. It may not be what we, what it sound like it could be is what I'm trying to say. So I want the research to guide our decision and our discussion when that comes up. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. We will pair our work with school leaders, as well as Chief Academic Officer of Elementary, Leslie Wiggins, and some informed research into our recommendation.
Mr. Percival.
I was just going to move to adopt the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Mr. Percival and seconded by Ms. Burke, Madam Clerk. Mr. Percival.
Yes.
Ms. Ricard.
Yes.
Mr. Farouk.
Yes.
Mr. Hedgesmith.
Yes.
Ms. Rizzi. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Jabari. Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up is new business, 7.01, colleagues. Anybody have items?
I do, I'm sorry. I was trying to text, I was trying to follow the process and text you and Ms. Richardson. I'm sorry. But I can't wait, but I do, yes, ma'am.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, I don't see any, oh, a Ms. Burke. Okay. Dr. Harris Mohammed, go right ahead.
Thank you. So last month, I asked that we could have an update on the Richmond, for Richmond High School for the Arts Council Board or Art Board or Art Council and the diversity of that Board slash Council. I don't know what title they use. I was told by several individuals that it was a board. I'm not quite sure if that's how they function. But I still would like to have, I would like for the board to have that information. For example, who's For example, who's on it? How were they chosen? Where, whether they, do they live in the city? Where do they, you know, just a background, just the same, the equitable information that our Richmond Ed Fund provides us about their board members, we should have about the board for the Richmond High School for the Arts. That's the one thing. That's my second ask, actually, my third, because I put it in the email. The second thing is this. I also would like for the board to have information on, now, this is going to be a little lengthy, and I'm sorry, but some information on when our former chief of operations left, what was the heavy lift on the construction? And has there been any work orders? Has there been any changes or discussion of changes made for the construction? And the board is not aware, the full board is not aware. I don't think that's a heavy ask. I just think if there were work orders in terms of changes made on the construction of the building, that could be easily prepared for the board to review, or could be discussed by our chief operating officer or the superintendent. I thought I heard during public comment tonight that people were feeling left out. They were no longer a part of the process. I don't know if that is true or not, but I also know that perception matters. And so, I would like that information, if it can be presented to the board. And it's, it's a easy, it's an easy search. How many orders has been approved? What were the cost of those orders? Where were those orders approved? Did they go through the procurement process? All of that information should be a part of that. And are we in debt? Also, important, last thing, are we going to be in debt with any of the changes for the Richmond High School for the Arts? If we're not, let's say so. If there is money out there that we're going to have to be prepared to spend, we need to know that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is my second act regarding the Early College Academy. I asked previously that it be added to an agenda to include what supports were in place for our students. We talked about that last year. We talked about that earlier, and I look forward to receiving that. And my other question is, are there any tutorial programs in our secondary, in our comprehensive high schools? Are there any tutors in place to support? And I'm still referring back to that, those 10 students that were dropouts that were listed yesterday. I just want to know what type of supports are in place for our students. Maybe they are beyond just study hall. So, I have two questions, two asks. Early College Academy, what's in place to support the students, as we discussed? And number two, if there are tutorial programs in place for secondary? Thank you.
Thank you. I can share with you that Earl's College Academy is on November's agenda, just so you're aware. Anyone else?
All right, who has closed session? Mr. Farouk.
Madam Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Richmond convene in closed session to consult with legal counsel regarding the possible filing of a lawsuit where such consultation in opening meeting would adversely affect the litigation posture of the School Board as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7, to discuss the religious exemption request of an RPS student, including student matters, 2526-04 through 2526-09, as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2, to discuss the evaluation of specific Central Office employees, as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, and to discuss the performance of one Central Office employee, as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, and to consult with legal counsel regarding the same, as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Farouk and seconded by Ms. Ricard, Madam Clerk. Mr. Percival.
Yes.
Ms. Ricard.
Yes.
Mr. Farouk.
Yes.
Mr. Hedgesmith. Ms. Rizzi.
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Jabari. Ms. Fernandez.
Yes.
Motion passes. We are now in close, colleagues.